And our hearts go out to the folks that got some flooding damage and hope everyone is okay. So with that said, our first order of business is the call to order. So commissioners, if you'll, well, before we do the call to order, two housekeeping items, which is number one, make sure that your devices are kept on mute. It really helps with the feedback. And then number two, when I say raise your hand, that means your icon hand in the app, in the WebEx app. And so we'll go to the call of order. And so when I call the commissioner's name, if you'll say present or here, Vice Chair Farr.
I'm here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Lawson.
Present.
Council Lady Murphy.
Present.
Excellent. And I'm here. That makes six. That brings us to a quorum. But if the staff will help me watch and make sure that no one falls off because we do need to have six folks. So our next order of business is item B, which is the establishment of the COVID-19 telephonic meeting as permitted under executive order number 16. I believe our attorney is on the line. Alex, you want to give us?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Just as a reminder to everyone today, the electronic meetings executive order requires that if you are speaking, that you identify yourself before you speak. Alternatively, if the chair calls on you by name, then you don't have to repeat your name. But the motion you're looking for is that the proposed agenda constitutes essential business of this body, and the meeting electronically is necessary for the health, safety, and well-being of Tennesseans in light of the COVID-19 outbreak, and that all current planning rules in conflict with the executive order are temporarily suspended.
Thank you, Alex. And so commissioners, you've heard that information. And so we will need a motion for that. Is there, Vice Chair, you want to make that motion?
I will make a motion to approve the telephonic meeting for the motion, or per our attorney.
Thank you. That's a proper motion. And is there a second? If you'd raise your icon hand. How about Commissioner Haynes? Commissioner Haynes? Proper second, any discussion? If you would raise your icon hand. And for a discussion and for verbally state you'd like to discuss, seeing none, we are ready for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ayes have it. And we are approved to have a telephonic meeting. Next is item C, which is the adoption of the agenda. And that was sent out to you all early and posted on the website. And so hopefully commissioners, you reviewed the agenda, and we will need a motion to adopt the agenda. Vice Chair Farr.
I will make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Proper motion. Is there a second? If you'd raise your icon hand.
Second.
Commissioner Lawson, the seconds. It's a proper second. Any discussion on the agenda, or questions, or edits? You'll raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to speak? Seeing none, we are ready for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Chair votes ayes have it. And the agenda is adopted. We are now on to the approval of the March 25th. Well, and hold on, before I get to that, hold on one second. So we are, according to our call center, we are getting some calls right now. And so we are not ready for folks to call in yet. You have to call in on your item. And so we'll let you know when we get to that particular item. And so I just want to clear that up with everyone before we get going again. All right. So we've adopted the agenda. We are now on to item D, which is the approval of the March 25th, 2021 minutes of the Planning Commission. And that was also sent to y'all and posted on the website. And so is there a motion to adopt the minutes? Vice Chair, Vice Chair Farr makes the motion. And Commissioner Tibbs is present. Commissioner Tibbs, would you like the second?
I'd like the second and to let you know I'm here.
Thank you. We'll make sure that the agenda, that the roll call, that you are now present. Appreciate that. And so we have a proper motion. And second, on the minutes, any discussion? If you would raise your icon hand and/or verbally state you would like to discuss? Seeing none, we are ready for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And the minutes are approved. And so we are on to item E, which is the recognition of the council members. And we take these as we see you come into, log into the app, just like we do at the Planning Commission meeting in person. And so, and as far as I can see, we are starting with Council Lady Hauser. Council Lady, and of course, you can speak now, or just let us know if you want to speak later on the item. Council Lady Hauser. I see her, but I don't. Council Lady Hauser, you're still muted. We will come back to Council Lady Hauser. And next, I saw Councilman Syracuse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. I have items 12 and 18 on your agenda. Item 12, I believe, being on consent, a 16-unit cottage-style development. And item 18 is not on consent. And that is a proposed 43-unit single-family development. I like that these are both tracking together because both properties are contiguous with each other. I did have two community meetings in 2019 about item 12, but I've had very little engagement with the developer on item 18. Finally, did have a good conversation with them, expressing my concerns about that development, and that we have not had a community meeting about it. So especially because these two developments are together, there are some shared, if you will, quote-unquote, infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. And so I would ask that both of these be deferred so that we can continue conversations about those infrastructure issues. And overall, the community's great concern that in the Pennington Bend area, we are starting to put 10 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound sack out there without the needed infrastructure. So it's my request that you all defer these one meeting so that I can engage the community, get a community meeting together about item 18, and then bring them back to, hopefully, in an improved form. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And for clarification, yes, they are both on the deferral list. So keep listening. Make sure we, there shouldn't be any issues with that. So I appreciate you joining us today. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. So next, I saw Councilman Withers.
Thank you so much, Chair Atkins, for recognizing me. I'm just listening in. So look forward to the discussion on a few items later on the agenda. But I'm just here to listen and thank you all for your service.
Oh, good. Well, welcome. An active Councilman listener. We appreciate all the council members. Thank you. Next, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you so much for recognizing me. I plan on staying on and listening to item 14, Preserve at Priest Lake. But I have another pre-planned or prior planned event at 6 o'clock that I might have to jump off for. So in that case, I just want to speak briefly that this project, we had our first community meeting back in November of 2019. We've had several virtual meetings since then. And we even had a, had a meeting last night between myself, the property owner, developer, and some members of the community, and did a walkthrough of the property to, for the developer to kind of explain what they're wanting to do. So I'll be curious to hear some of the comments from the public if anyone calls in. But I look forward to hearing the recommendations from the Planning Commission on this.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Next, we saw Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate you recognizing me. I have two items on the agenda. One is number eight, which is being deferred. But the one I'm here to speak on is item number 16 in relation to the name change for Blake Drive. I'm in support of this name change. I understand that we, we ended up with two different Blake Drives. They were in the development phase, meant to connect to one another. But with changes that occurred, that never really happened, which leave us with two streets of the same name, which ends up as a safety concern for emergency responders. And I've taken a look at this particular area. And, and if you're on the wrong Blake Drive, you're, you're a long way in terms of road travel to get to the other Blake Drive. And so that is a safety issue. And it makes sense, obviously, to change the name of one of them. And just the most obvious being the one that impacts the least amount of people. And so this Blake Drive name change is the, the one that just makes the most sense. And I'm, I'm here in support of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe item eight is on the consent agenda, not, not deferral list, Councilman, just to clarify. All right. So next, I saw Councilman Rosenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll wait till my item comes up, if that's all right.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. No problem. Then I saw Council Lady Porterfield.
Thank you so very much, Chair. I just wanted to confirm there are three District 29 items on the agenda today. And that is, those are, excuse me, items number four, 10, and 13. It appears that they will all be deferred until the April 22nd meeting. And I just wanted to, to confirm those deferrals.
Okay, yeah, I believe that, that is correct. And so they should stay on that, that list. Lisa will read, you know, go through that when, when we get to that next item.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'm going to drop off the call then. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Lady. Appreciate it. Next, that's Councilmember Benedict. Councilmember Benedict. You're on mute. You're trying to speak. We'll try to come back to Council Lady Benedict. How about Council Lady Hauser? I saw, I believe. Council Lady Hauser, can you hear us? You're on mute. All right. We'll try, we'll try back later with Council Lady Hauser. How about Councilmember Benedict again?
Thank you, Chair. I'm, I'm here. I'm, I'm here to listen today. Thank you so much.
Oh, perfect. Great. Well, welcome, Council Lady. Appreciate it. And I believe that concludes our council list. Let's try.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Councilmember Rutherford again. Pardon the interruption, but I wanted to back up to number eight. You mentioned that it's on consent. My notes reflect that that should be deferred until April 22nd.
All right, let's ask Ms. Milligan. That? Lisa?
Hi. Yes, item number eight will be deferred to the 22nd.
Perfect. I had.
Thank you.
Noted incorrectly, Councilman. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right. So we have Council Lady Hauser. Can we, I, I see you on the line, but you're still muted, if you can hear us. And, and then Councilman Rutherford, your, your hand is up in the app, too. If you could turn that off, that would be great, just so we don't, there we go. Thank you. All right, we'll come back to Council Lady Hauser if we, but at this point, it seems like I can't get, she can't hear us. So Lisa, is that all of the council members? I want to make sure we don't miss anyone.
Hi, Chair. The, I, I believe you have called on everyone that I see. Let me check the attendee to make sure there's no one in the list. Nope, that, you've called on everyone that I see.
Excellent. I, I want to say thank you to all the council members. We always work hand in hand. And we, we appreciate everyone very much. So thank you for joining us today and the public. So now that concludes that portion of the agenda. So now we are ready for item F, which is items for deferral withdrawal. Lisa?
Hi, thank you, Chairman. This is Lisa Milligan with the Metro Planning Department. The following items are for consent or withdrawal. Item number 1A, on page three of your agenda, 2021 CP 008001, North Nashville Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item 1B, 2021 SP 004001, 41st Avenue North SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, on page four of your agenda, 2021 SP 008001, 6821 Old Charlotte Pike. Staff recommendation is to, is to withdraw. Item number three, 2021 S 060001, Scruggs Estates. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number four, 2021 Z 028 PR 001, a rezoning on Ned Shelton Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number five, 2021 Z 030 PR 001, a rezoning request on O'Brien Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number six, 2021 Z 032 PR 001, to request a rezone for property located on Clarksville Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number seven, 2021 S 015001. It's a request to, I'm sorry, Rivergate Station, Section 1, 2nd resub of Lot 2. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number eight, 2004 P 013009, Mill Creek Town Center Phase 2 Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number nine, 2020 S 145001, Bordeaux Agrihood. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 10, 2021 S 045001, resubdivision of Lots 5 and 6 and Airport Logistics. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 12, 2021 SP 021001, Pennington Bend Cottages. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 13, 2021 SP 027001, 2377 Couchville Pike SP. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Item number 18, 2020 Z 143 PR 001. It's a rezoning request at 2600 Pennington Bend Road. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 22nd Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lisa. And I think you said these are items for consent or withdrawal, but it's deferral or withdrawal. Sometimes words get mixed up. But I just want to clarify, these are all items for deferral withdrawal. So commissioners, you've heard the items that Lisa has said. And so Lisa, make sure I get these correct. The items for deferral or withdrawal are items 1A, 1B, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 13, and 18. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Lisa. Great job. And so commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. We will need a motion.
Move to accept the deferrals.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson moves to, for these items to be deferred or withdrawn. And is there a second? Commissioner Tibbs.
I'll second that.
The proper second. So we have, now have a proper motion. A second, any discussion on the deferral or withdrawn items? If you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to speak? Seeing none, we are ready now for a roll call vote. Commissioner Farr, Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson. Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Hello.
We got you, Commissioner. Excellent. And Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Ayes have it. And those items are deferred or withdrawn. So now we are on to item G of the agenda, which is the consent agenda items. Lisa?
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Entry or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. As items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time, no individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The following items are on the consent agenda. On page five of your agenda, item number 11, 2021 SP 019001, 217 Cleveland Street. It's a request to rezone from SP to SP for property located on Cleveland Street to permit all uses allowed under RM 15A NS zoning. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And under other business, on page eight of your agenda, item number 21, a new employee contract for OSCO Orozco, and item number 25, to accept the director's report.
Chairman, this is Lucy Kempf with the Planning Department. I'm unable to hear you if you are speaking.
Oops, that was my, I'm sorry. So Lisa, can, you broke up on item 21. Can you repeat that that's?
Oh, yes. Yes, sorry. Item 21 is a new employee contract for OSCO Orozco, and item number 25, to accept director's report. So three items on consent, 11, 21, and 25.
Thank you, Lisa. And so sorry about that, not unmeeting myself. Y'all keep me straight, and I really appreciate that. And so commissioners, you've heard the items, items 11, 21, and 25 on the consent agenda. We'll need a motion to approve. Is there a motion? You'll, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to approve our consent agenda items.
Thank you. It's a proper motion. And Council Lady Murphy?
I second that motion.
Proper motion. And second, and any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to discuss? Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote. And I think we, I believe we are net, we also have Commissioners Sims with us for purposes of roll call. Commissioner Sims, are you present?
I am. Thank you for, I'm, I'm sorry I was late. I had another appointment. Thank you.
It's fine. It's, it's fine. Life is busy. All right. So Vice Chair Farr, we're on the vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
All right, ayes have it. And the consent agenda is adopted. And welcome to the call, Commissioner Sims. So we are now on item H, which is the items to be considered under the public hearing. And so the items, Lisa, that I have, I believe, so that every, the public and the commissioners know which we are considering, are items 14, 15, 16, 17, 19, and 20A and B. Is that correct?
Aye, Chairman. Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. So let's, before we hear the first presentation, I want to make just a couple announcements for the listeners at home. We have provided multiple ways to participate in this telephonic meeting. We appreciate everyone allowing us, and your patience allowing us to do this because of the COVID-19. And we, we do appreciate that. Safety is extremely important for not only the commissioners, but of course, the public and the staff. Normally, we take applicant first, then supporters, then opponents. But because of the different ways for people to participate, we'll be taking supporters and opponents together. To help us, please state your name, your address, and whether you support or oppose an item. As usual, we took email comments through Tuesday at 3:00 PM. At the start of each public hearing, Lisa will give a summary of how many email comments were received on each item. And if they were for them or opposed to them, we also have a call-in number for members of the public who wish to call in and testify. As I stated earlier, please wait until the public hearing for your particular item begins before calling. Also, it's a queue system, so we don't want you testifying on the wrong case. If you're calling, also, please be aware that there is a legally 30-minute delay, which means that if you're watching your screen, it's going to confuse you. So pay, you know, you need to turn your TV down all the way to me, or mute it, which helps with feedback. And pay attention to what, what we say on the telephone. And so I appreciate that. And like I said, for each item, we'll let you know when to call in. And so now we are ready, I believe, for the presentation on the first item, which is item number 14.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Logan Elliott, and I will be presenting item 14 on behalf of the Planning Department. Next slide, please. Item 14 is a request to rezone from RS 10 to specific plan zoning to permit 38 multifamily residential units. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Next slide, please. This 6.2-acre property is currently zoned RS 10 and is surrounded by RS 10, R 10, and a residential PUD permitting multifamily residential units. The specific plan adjacent to the site on Elm Hill Pike permits a child daycare facility to the west of the site and the residential PUD. There exists attached townhome-type unit. There exists attached townhome type unit. And to the west of this PUD is a development of duplex units. To the south of Elm Hill Pike, there are other attached townhome type units and duplex units. Next slide, please. The policy for this area is suburban neighborhood maintenance and is intended to maintain the general character of the developed suburban residential neighborhoods. Conservation policy also exists here and recognizes significant slopes and a wetland feature. Next slide, please. The site plan proposes a mixture of detached and attached multifamily residential structures for total 38 units. The plan proposes a single access point from Elm Hill Pike, and the units are served by internal private drive. The plan proposes units that front onto Elm Hill Pike, and otherwise the units front internally onto private streets. Also, the plan provides perimeter landscape buffers along the western, northern, and property boundaries shared with the daycare facility. Next slide, please. The proposed specific plan is appropriate to the suburban neighborhood maintenance policy, given the context of the surrounding development pattern and the site's frontage onto an arterial boulevard. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. This completes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. We appreciate that. And so we'll open the public hearing, and is the applicant underlying?
Yes, I am, this is Doug Sloan. I'm representing the applicant.
Hello, Mr. Sloan, and you have 10 minutes to present your case. You may save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and address, and appreciate you joining us today, Mr. Sloan.
Yeah, thank you for having us. Again, my name's Doug Sloan. I live at 6354 Torrington Road in Nashville. With me is former councilmember Josh Stites. Josh is the principal for the group that recently purchased the property. That's the subject of this SP request. Also want to thank Logan Elliott for doing that presentation. If we leave up the plans that are shown here, I think that'll be helpful as we move through the presentation. And of course, as always, thank you to the commissioners for your time. As previously stated by Logan, this is a request for an SP zone district for properties at 3128 Elm Hill Pike. There are two parcels that together measure approximately 6.2 acres, and we are requesting 38 single-family homes to be on this property. And also a dedication, as you can see, on the plans of approximately one and a half acres of open space that'll be located to the east adjacent to the existing RS 10 single-family neighborhood. Public Works has placed a condition on the property for the zone change to require that Elm Hill Pike be restripped to allow for a turn lane very near the entrance of this development. And of course, the development group has agreed to this condition. Josh and his team have led several community meetings, as the councilman has pointed out. In addition to the count, the meeting the councilman pointed out, he, Josh, was also able to lead an in-person meeting back in February of last year prior to the pandemic, and held that at Whitworth Baptist Church nearby. They also held two more last year, two more virtual meetings in August and November. And then, as the councilman pointed out, there was another meeting that was held at the site last night with the councilman and several other neighbors. Many of the design features that are included in this, including the open space, were developed through the community outreach and comments received at the meetings. The density that's being sought really acts as a transition between the RS 10 properties that are to the east that, as I mentioned earlier, buffered by the open space, and the properties developed to the west, which net out to 10 to 12 units per acre. And the same condition really exists across Elm Hill Pike with the density that measured out, measures out at approximately 10 units per acre. There have been previous development efforts at this location, at this location that have not been embraced in any of the community. The previous development effort was for approximately 150 apartment units. And this created, created quite a controversy for the community. And I think a lot of angst regarding development on this property. Josh's goal, his development team's goal, has been to try to strike a balance between the density that you see to the west and to the east, and meet with the community as much as possible and embrace their thoughts about how this should be developed. We feel like certainly that they have struck that balance, and we appreciate the department's recommendation of approval and would ask to reserve two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. And so we will reserve two minutes for rebuttal. We are now ready to take calls from the members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show a call-in number now. Don't hesitate because to call in on this particular item, because we'll place you in a queue system. As a reminder, please only call in on this particular, your particular case. When you begin your testimony, state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the item. We're not able to display the timer visually, but Sean will be keeping track of your two minutes. She'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left and when your time is finished. So thank you for that. Lisa, did we receive any emails on this particular item?
Hi, Chairman. We did. We received, hold on, I'm so sorry. We received two emails in opposition and four emails in support.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do we have any callers on this side?
Chair, this is Sean at the call center. We don't have any callers at this moment. Since this is the first call-in item, we'll take a brief pause in case anyone's trying to reach us, and I'll check back in with you.
Thank you.
Chair, we don't have any callers in the queue for this item.
Thank you. And so how about?
But I'm sorry to interrupt. This is Sean. As those words were coming out of my mouth, the phone rang, so pause with us just a moment. We'll find out if it's this item.
Put the caller in. Thank you. Go ahead and put them in.
Chair, you have the first caller.
All right, welcome. And please state your name and address, and you have two minutes. You may begin.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Jessica Schultz, and I'm at 3113 Noble Valley Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. And I am not sure of my answer on if I'm in support or opposition, because the question is, is with the conditions. And so I want to say I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I truly appreciate our councilman, Russ Bradford, attention and allowing our voice to be heard finally in our district, giving us that opportunity. So he has done a great job, as well as Jessica coming in and allowing us to, he was very accommodating to all the questions and requests made, which is very appreciative. And so I think it shows, you know, some collaboration with them and some way to try to move forward from where we've been on this, and I'm in agreement with that. But the concern would be is if we say approved on condition, those conditions haven't fully been clarified. And when we talk about conditions, it's not specific to what's in the plans. It's something that's going to be next. So if that next step can be the condition is the community's voice can still be heard on the conditions, then I would be in agreement with that. But if that is not the case, then I would unfortunately have to oppose. But it would not be because of anything specific. It just would need some clarification that I don't have an answer to at this time. But again, I thank you for the opportunity.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
Heard. Thank you. And I really do appreciate the councilman's time and attention to this, and also the new developers' accommodation has been truly fresh breath air for what's been happening in our area, and I hope that this continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling in. Sean, any other callers?
Chair, we do have a caller. We're trying to confirm if it's for this item. Bear with us just a moment.
Thank you.
Chair, this is Sean again. We have confirmed that the current caller is trying to reach us about a different item, so we have no additional callers for this item, item 14.
Okay, thank you. And so now we're on to rebuttal. Mr. Sloan, would you like to review for two minutes?
Well, the only thing that I would add, Chairman, is that the only condition that we've been presented beyond those that we've already accommodated in the site plan is the addition of a turn lane on Elm Hill Pike, which as I said, that we've agreed to. Certainly, we're going to keep the discussions open, as I know the councilman will require as we move hopefully towards second reading. And we will reach out to Ms. Schultz. I think it was before the second reading and make sure that we go over the details of the design. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And now we are ready for Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Commissioner, for recognizing me again. Again, I reiterate, I appreciate the willingness of Mr. Stites to be open-minded with the community, and I also appreciate the community's open-mindedness and willing to collaborate and try and come up with a design with a plan that can make both sides happy. I'm also very excited about the condition, because one thing that we did talk about in some of the feedback sessions was the community did want some kind of turn lane or built into the property to help with traffic on Elm Hill, because Elm Hill traffic is quite a concern out here. So even though this actual concept plan had that turn lane removed, I do appreciate that Public Works is willing to look into restriping Elm Hill to add that turning option into this community. With that, I will ask the mission to approve this so that I can take this plan to the community and begin having our discussions on more details about landscaping and building design. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Appreciate you joining us. And so seeing no one else wishing to speak, I close the public hearing. And how about we start with Commissioner Haynes?
I think Logan did a great job summarizing staff's recommendation. I think this is a good plan. I like the fact that several people have tried this in the past without community support, and it seems like we've got reasonable support, so I'm going to support staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, I do echo Commissioner Haynes. I think staff did excellent job, and I do appreciate outreach by development team and as well as councilmember. And especially, you know, neighborhood surrounded by single-family home, it is hard to see open space turning into new development and new housing that include multi-housing and so forth. But, you know, that's the beauty of planning process. And I think in this plan, and sounded like development team did great outreach, and I am so happy to see open space, especially accompanied with dog park. So there was a great plan of the transition, and sounded like the traffic concern is addressed. And, you know, going forward, the beauty of this plan is these zone change are amendable until third reading. So if between now and moving forward to council process, if there's some issue arise, I'm sure both team can come up and solve whatever the issue or clarification needed to be clarified. So in that point of view, I am in support of this plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawson?
Well, I'm not going to reiterate what has already been said, because it's been said very well. The staff has done a very good job in preparing this, and I would support their recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to touch on the turn lane real quick. Do we have a slide showing where that turn lane is, or how long it is? Or it's like how, like, is it just the length of the site? Do we have that information?
Hi, councilmember. We don't have that at this point. I believe that's something that would be worked out with Public Works, but it is not currently shown on the plan, but they, but the developer has agreed to work with Public Works to make that happen.
Okay, so if we pass this out tonight and Councilman Bradford attaches that at council, that's not going to affect our recommendation or conditions. Is that correct?
Hi, that's correct. Adding a condition that is more specific in regards to the turn line. Oh, this is Lisa, sorry. Adding a condition that's more specific in regards to the turn line would not require that this be re-refered, as it would be generally consistent with anything that you all have considered tonight.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure that we are addressing, I mean, not that all the traffic on Elm Hill is going to be caused by this, but we know traffic is already an issue here. This is increasing the density. I want to make sure that Councilman Bradford has all the flexibility he needs to be able to put the conditions on that makes his community feel comfortable. And I have total faith that he will do that, because I did notice in the traffic and parking recommendations, the, I found it a little strange that the increase in density from 23 units to 38 units is only producing like 10 more daily trips, and then going actually down on the peak hours, AM and PM peak hours. I found that interesting. And so was there a traffic study done on this, or is that just like a normal calculation?
Hi, no, there was not a traffic study done. It would not be triggered by a development of this size. The type of trip generation varies between different types. So if we're talking about single-family homes on single lots versus multifamily, which is what this would be considered, that can, that can explain the difference in the trip generation.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that. And I'm glad to hear that Councilman Bradford has the leeway to, to make sure things are taken care of in with his turn lanes. Other than that, I think this sounds like a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
Yes, I really appreciate my colleagues. They've said everything I want to say. I do want to make sure I emphasize how important it is, the work that Commissioner Bradford and the community did together, both in leadership and persistence. So I really like this. I think it's ended up much better than it started years ago. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Tibbs?
Yeah, I, I don't really have any, anything more meaningful to say. I appreciate the process. So yeah, I, I would also go with staff recommendation.
Excellent. Vice Chair Farr?
I don't have anything else to add. I think it looks like a good plan, and I think I'm last. So if that's the case, I'm happy to make a motion that we
So if that's the case, I'm happy to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Tibbs?
Goodbye, second half.
Proper motion and second, any discussion? If you, any more discussion, please raise your icon hand or verbally state you'd like to speak. Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Councilman Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Ayes have it. And item number 14 is approved. And so now we are now on to item 15. And I think that's Logan as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My name is Logan Elliott and I'll be presenting item 15 on behalf of the Planning Department. Next slide, please. Item 15 is a request for a periodic review of the Old Mill specific plan located at 8811 Newsome Station Road and 8873 Newsome Station Road. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to find the SP inactive and to advise council to rezone the property. Next slide, please. Metro Council originally approved the Old Mill specific plan in 2007 for a mixed residential development, including 16 two-family unit, 35 townhomes, and 197 single-family lots on approximately 131 acres. The plan proposes two access points. One access point is located along Newsome Station Road with the second access point including a bridge over the CSX railroad, providing a connection to the west side of Newsome Station Road. Next slide, please. The metro zoning ordinance sets forth the requirements for the planning commission to review any specific plan district to determine whether the SP is inactive. And if found inactive, requires the planning commission to recommend to the, to the council what action should be taken with respect to the SP. The commission determines whether, first, the commission determines whether the SP is inactive by examining whether development activity has occurred within four years from the date of the initial ordinance enactment, subsequent amendment, or reapproval by the Metro Council. And second, if the planning commission determines the SP to be inactive, the commission is required to recommend legislation to the council to reapprove, amend, or rezone the property. Next slide, please. So looking at the first finding to determine if the SP is active or inactive, we look at if four or more years have elapsed since the SP ordinance became effective or if other ordinance is reapproving or amending the application have become effective. In this case, more than four years have elapsed since the initial date of the enactment ordinance in 2007 and no further approvals have taken place. Next slide, please. The second finding of a periodic review looks if any construction has begun and staff finds that no construction has taken place in the SP under review. Next slide, please. The third finding looks at if any right-of-way has been acquired or if any off-site improvements have begun construction and staff finds that no right-of-way has been acquired and no off-site improvements have been constructed. Next slide, please. Finally, there is a catch-all finding that states that the planning commission may also take into consideration the aggregate of actions if any taken by the owner of the SP within the prior 12 months to develop the portion of the SP under review. Here, the representatives of the owner have indicated that the development team has been meeting with various agencies, including Metro Department, over the last several months to prepare for development of the site. The development team has also completed some preliminary environmental and engineering work. In review of the findings provided by the representatives of the owners, staff finds that the aggregate actions taken by the owner in the last 12 months does not constitute activity and therefore staff finds the specific plan to be inactive. Next slide, please. The second step in a periodic review is recommending action to the council. So in this case, staff is finding the SP to be inactive. So we look at rezoning the property. Next slide, please. When staff makes considerations on rezoning property, we look at land use policy. So the land use policy here is neighborhood maintenance with a significant portion of conservation policy. The specific plan under review is not consistent with the neighborhood maintenance policy and conservation policy here. The Bellevue community plan was updated in 2015 as a part of National Next. At that time, the property's land use policy was changed from residential, low, medium, to conservation and suburban neighborhood maintenance. Large portions of the SP property lie in areas designated as floodplain while stormwater regulation buffers extend along the northern and eastern boundaries of the site. Development should take into consideration the site's environmental features and should limit the disturbance of the conservation areas. Further, the site is heavily constrained from an access perspective with the site bounded by the Harpist River and I-40. Next slide, please. Here we see the site plan that was approved by Metro Council in 2007. The site plan proposes to conserve or to disturb conservation areas and also does not provide for connectivity or circulation that is consistent with the policy guidance for this area. Next slide, please. In conclusion, in accordance with the requirements of section 1740 106I of the Metro Zoning Code, staff recommends that the planning commission find the SP under review to be inactive. No development has taken place within this SP and there has not been an aggregate of action that constitutes activity by the owner over the last 12 months to develop the SP. If the planning commission finds the SP to be inactive, then staff recommends that the property be rezoned through a separate action at a future meeting. There are various zoning districts that may be appropriate, including RS-80 or an SP within associated site plan and a maximum density equivalent to the RS-40 zoning district. This completes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And hold on one second. We will open this item up for public hearing. And so we'll let the council member speak first since he requested this. And then in these particular cases, we usually give the 10 minutes and two minutes of rebuttal time for also for the applicant defending, well, not the applicant, but the property owner defending. And that's been our tradition. Is that correct, Lucy?
It is.
Excellent. I just want the commissioners to know that we don't see a lot of these particular cases, but when we do, I try to explain it. And so, Councilmember, do you want to go first?
Yes, please.
Go, go ahead. Thank you, Council.
Thank you and appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you all. This case is pretty cut and dry. There's a specific set of criteria laid out in the code to determine when an SP is inactive and this meets those criteria. And it's a good thing, too. Access to the site is horrendous thanks to a low clearance, one-lane, one-lane railroad tunnel from one direction and a hairpin turn in the floodplain from the other direction. Most of this site is in the floodplain. In fact, of the 127-acre parcel, you can only access two and a half acres of it without traversing the 100-year floodplain. I don't know if the photos or video that were emailed to y'all got to you too late to be included in the packet. It was sent to you by a neighbor nearby. But just last weekend, it was a swamp and it was completely cut off from the outside world. And that's, you know, not an atypical flood. This doesn't, this SP doesn't meet the, meet the community plan and the site's been sitting dormant for well over a decade. I appreciate the staff's recommendation that you find the SP inactive due to the fact that it meets every criteria and I respectfully request that you do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And obviously, we'll, at the very end, you can, you can go last. So now we're on to, the owner is the Old Mill Partnership on the line?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not on the line. I'm coming through on the webex. I hope that's okay.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, that's what I meant. Sorry. So you have 10 minutes and then two minutes for rebuttal. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't, won't take that much time. My name's George Dean. I'm an attorney to an contractor of White. We're at 511th Avenue North. We represent the owner and he's opposed to the cancellation of the planning development. Having said that, I do want to say that the staff's presentation was fair. There has not been work on the site. I'd ask the planning commission to take into consideration the aggregate of actions. As Logan mentioned, that's something that the planning commission can also look at. Over the last year or so, the owner's been making diligent efforts to get this project up and running. He's had many conversations and meetings with various departments of both the state and the local level, including the Army Corps of Engineers and TDAC. Part of the problem for this, there's a requirement for a construction of a bridge that requires consultation with CSX Railroad. In addition, there's a conduit that's got to be put onto the interstate in order to make the development. So working with TDOT was mandatory. There's also a construction of a road through Newsome Mill Park that was proposed and, and he's been talking with the Tennessee State Department of Parks. There's been extensive communications with many of the metro departments, including the planning commission and Metro Public Works. Spent a lot of money on engineering and, and trying to get the environmental consultations done that needed, including core drillings onsite for the environmental issues as well as for that required bridge that I mentioned previously. There's also been a number of other onsite surveys completed. The project is under contract with a home builder. And again, I will say that the staff's been fair about, there's just not been work on the site. But with the preliminary meetings and consultations, we asked the planning commission to find that the SP is still active and allow us to proceed with the development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. So now we are ready to take calls from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show that call-in number now. You don't have to wait. Call in, we'll put you in the queue system on this particular item. And when you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether or not you support or oppose the item. We're not able to display the timer visually. Sean will let you know when you have, of the, you have two minutes to speak and she'll let you know when you have 30 seconds left and when your time is over. We appreciate everybody calling in and thank you. Next, Lisa, did we receive any emails on this item?
Hi, Chair. We did. So this is a little bit different in regards to considering it in support or opposition. We had eight emails in support of finding the, finding the SP inactive. So, so eight that supported staff's recommendation.
Thank you for that clarification. Very helpful. Sean, do we have any callers on this item?
Chair, we do have several callers, so we'll get the first one queued up and I'll let you know when we have them in the meeting.
Thank you.
Chair, you have the first caller.
All right. Kathleen, pardon?
Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Okay, Kathleen A. Epstein, 8512 Newsome Station Road. I'm calling in regard to the Old Mill development on Newsome Station Road, 2006SP-093-002. I'm calling in regard to opposition because this area floods three to four times a year and also the overburdening of the Newsome Station Road traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
Thank you. To the commissioners for allowing me to voice my support of staff's recommendation for abandoning this project at Old Mill, the Old Mill project. I am Mark Ty, along with my wife, our 13-year residents of 8405 Rolling Hills Drive in the Merrymont Acres subdivision, which is adjacent to the proposed development. We moved out to this area of Bellevue as it is so reminiscent of the East Tennessee Mountains, which you're, which we truly love. Quiet, peaceful, and comprised of very friendly, concerned, community-oriented neighbors. Our main concern for the feasibility of this project continues one of important life safety issues. During the 2010 disastrous flood event, our subdivision off of Newsome Station Road was totally inaccessible by fire, ambulance, police, and utility services due to the high water on Highway 70 to a point just west of Fire Station Number 34. Many homes were a total loss and unable to be rebuilt, a devastating blow to our community. The seven-inch rain event of a few Saturdays ago again left us, as I like to call it, an island in the storm as Newsome Station Road flooded once again. This is not an isolated event and as it frequently happens. But the commission queries Metro Public Works and asks how many times a year Newsome Station Road past the intersection of Merrymont Drive is closed due to high water in the Harpist at the historic Newsome Mill.
You have 30 seconds.
To have a clear-cut answer that 500 to 600-plus potential residents of the proposed Old Mill site will share the same fate as many of us currently do. I know from personal experience how few rescue boats Metro Fire and OEM has. I monitor Fire and OEM radio traffic during storm events and have come to realize that, you know, at times it's 45 minutes to an hour for a boat to respond. The project is fraught with many unsurmountable challenges.
Caller, your time has expired. Please wrap up your thought.
I strongly suggest the commission abide by the staff's recommendation to make this inactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
Thank you.
Welcome. You may begin.
Hello, this is Mark Marshall of 8509 Newsome Station Road and I'm calling to support the disapproval of this development. It's come up before. It hasn't been developed before. And as you've heard some of the other callers and neighbors here say, it's primarily for safety reasons. The frequent flooding, it's not unusual for this road to be closed. It's not unusual to drive down Highway 70 and make a left turn on the Newsome Station Road and see a caution sign saying road closed. So it happens pretty frequently. You know, having survived a 2010 flood and having seen many neighbors who lost everything in that flood, again, we're most concerned about anyone who might end up buying a home on this site not aware of that and want to propose that there's a, that there's, if there are any other future attempts, you know, to zone this property, that that be disapproved. I believe there's likely other better uses for this property that are more suitable for the conditions that are down there. And I'd also like to echo some of the concerns that we have about, you know, added traffic along Newsome Station Road. Many of us, many, many of us along Newsome Station Road have to cross the street every day through lanes of traffic coming and going just to get our mail. And, you know, additional traffic out here with some sort of changes would be.
30 seconds.
So thank you for your attention. Thank you for your support and we look forward to seeing where this project goes next. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean. Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
Hi, Chair. You may begin. Hi, this is Ryan Lovelace. I'm with Civil Design Group here in Nashville. We're the civil engineers on the project. Been on this project for 10 years now. Of course, tonight we're talking about is this project active or not? I've gone through a lot of these, a lot of these SPs to fight this process one way or the other. I guess from the naked eye, it looks like it might be inactive, but I'll tell you this. We have worked with a number and number of builders and here over the last six months, one of the national builders has worked extensively on this project. I've done engineering for 20 years and this is, I will say, one of the most complicated projects that I've worked on. Just because you're required to work with the Tennessee State Parks on the Newsome Mill property, TDOT, we've got to board the interstate, TVA runs through there, CSX, got to build a bridge over those tracks, FEMA, TDAC, the Corps of Engineers. It is a complicated project. So there is a lot of stuff that we have done in the background over the last six months to make this project start. And just now with real estate prices where they are, this bridge is just now becoming feasible. And I know you guys have three or four criteria you have to look at to make it inactive or active project. I'll tell you this, it is a one-lane underpass under that railroad tracks right now. That's what a lot of people are talking about. That's what floods as well as property, forces of property. This project is tagged right now with building a bridge over the railroad tracks.
You have 30 seconds.
It's a one-lane underpass. If we have to, you know, lose this SP and rezone to an RS40, that bridge will never happen. This will be a one-lane underpass forever. We've talked to Public Works before. This is not even on the radar to put a bridge over there for the city. So that's the benefit of this SP, wanting to get, you know, homes out there, but the homes have to be there to have the money to build this bridge that's tagged for the SP. So I understand the process. I just want to say that, just wanted to share that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Thank you. I am Jan.
You may begin.
Okay. I am Jan West at 8561 Newsome Station Road. I am strongly opposed to the Old Mill Partners building plan. We have lived here 52 years and seen we have seen, oh, we have seen two of our favorite homes completely destroyed by the 2010 flood. The recent flood did a lot of damage to a third house to near us. Completely isolated with both ends of the road closed for at least three, four days. At least three or four days until the water has receded with all the debris left on the road and the road is passable. The Old Mill property is near the Harpeth River Valley, Harpeth River, and much lower than the Newsome Station neighborhood. It is not so much about traffic as it is knowing that the new homeowners here will have no idea about how high the waters can get and risk losing their homes also. Thank you very much for considering.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
Thank you. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Bonnie. There I live at 6232 River Valley Drive in Riverwalk by the Harpeth. This is, this development is going to be, to me and my husband and our neighborhood, another disaster. It's going to put over 500 cars on the road every day if it goes as is proposed. And you just approved the PUD to continue on Newsome Station that's right by Riverwalk and is part of the Riverwalk development. And that's going to put all those townhomes in there, which we're totally against. And that was going to bring enough traffic to upset the apple cart and then putting all these cars on the road. I don't, even though they may propose a bridge, there's still, Newsome Station is not the kind of road. It's only two lanes. It's narrow. There's a lot of homes right on the road. It's very disturbing. It's windy. I just don't see how this is going to work. And we want you to follow the staff's recommendation. It's just environmental issues, the access onto Newsome Station. The flooding has been, we've only lived here a few years, but I can't tell you how many times they've put up a sign that we can't go down Newsome Station Road. And we have to go over and down the quarry and head up stuff.
Caller, you have 30 seconds.
So we would really appreciate that you take the staff's recommendation and disapprove. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
All right, welcome. You may begin.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. My name is Paige Coy. I'm at 8445 Marymount Drive, just off Newsome Station Road. And although I have not been at this property for long, I have lived in Bellevue since 1982. And I wanted to echo what my fellow residents have said as far as opposing any sort of development on this Old Mill property. My deepest concern is for people that are unfamiliar with the area, if they're moving in from out of town or from outside of Bellevue. They are putting themselves at high risk. Our property backs up to the Harpeth River. We have three acres. And our acreage floods every time it rains, not just sometimes, not just last weekend, not just 2010. It floods every single time. And we are at 577 feet elevation. So the part of our property that floods is consistent with the level that is being proposed for development. So that is gravely concerning. The second concern is the traffic that this would incur. I will echo what's been said there. The traffic is a huge concern, which would not be fixed with just a bridge. It is a windy, narrow, wildlife-riddled back road.
You have 30 seconds.
That can put a huge stress on the area. The last concern is the draw on the power grid. It's, we have lost power seven times in a year already and have had to wire in a generator for our house. I just don't see that this is a feasible plan and we appreciate you keeping it inactive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Chair, you have the next caller.
Thank you. You may begin.
This is Henry Hartman. I live at 6232 River Valley Drive. I guess most of the flooding issues have been pretty well addressed, but I just wanted to reiterate a flyover bridge onto Newsome Station Road, the 500 extra cars would just be, well, it just couldn't handle it. So again, I want to recommend taking the staff's recommendation and disapproving. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean.
Chair, you have the next caller.
You may begin.
Hey, this is Tony De Pasco, 8426 Marymount Drive. Can we pull up some slides while I'm talking? I would appreciate it. The first one is the May 2010 flood.jpg that's in the SharePoint.
We'll try, but really I'm giving a lot of leeway and you're supposed to, you know, the callers really need to say why it is not an active development, not...
We opposed it. We lived at 8504 Newsome Station Road, which our house was totally destroyed in the 2010 flood. The water level that is on the property, the project that you have, reaches a level that will destroy every single home on that, on the plan. And at the same time, I mean, I apologize. I was wanting to go with the slides, but, so we oppose the project. Every, it looks like on the 2010 flood, when you look at the slides, every house in that development would probably get about 10 to 15 feet into their homes, destroying their homes and their lives. And so, yeah, that's, so we oppose the project. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And I do, I understand the flooding and that sort of thing, but I'm giving a lot of leeway to folks. We really need to try to focus the comments on why it doesn't meet activity, not why it's a bad development. So next caller, Sean.
Chair, we have no additional callers in the queue on this item.
All right, well, I guess I said it too late. But I really try to, you know, the Commission and myself, we really do try to do a lot of leeway. We appreciate everyone calling in. And so now we are ready for, I think that we could do the owner of the property now and then the council member. And so would Old Mill Partnership like to speak? Two-minute rebuttal.
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'll take just a few seconds.
Thank you.
I know that the Planning Commission hears many cases and you hear kind of similar kinds of concerns. But just to be clear, and no disrespect intended to the previous speakers in support of the cancellation of the SP. But whatever property, however it's developed out there, if the Planning Commission decides that, given what's happened over the last year, the efforts of my client, that it should not be canceled, or if another project comes along, they will be required to meet the stormwater regulations Metro Nashville. And the water coming across that property, it won't solve all the problems out there, obviously. But the water coming across that property will have to be handled in a way that's consistent with those stormwater regulations. So the development of the property will contribute to the solution, not the problem. Again, the same thing with the expansion of the bridge that Mr. Lovelace mentioned earlier. More importantly, I'll just reiterate that my client's been trying to get this thing underway. I wish that more activities onsite had taken place, but he just wasn't able to get there. He's done a lot of work in the background trying to get it going and again, you heard from the engineer about the difficulty. And we'd ask that the Planning Commission not cancel the status of this specific claim.
Owner, you have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And so now, Councilman Rosenberg, you want to finish up?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to everybody who, you know, participated, took the time to call and email to speak on this. I know this is really of great importance to a lot of people. I know the property owner or their attorney said that they have had meetings and that kind of thing. And even if that's true, that's great, but there are very specific criteria for finding an SP inactive for four more years, having elapsed since the last activity with respect to either the ordinance or a, or other action from the council, and it's been 14 years. No construction onsite. It meets that. No right-of-way acquired or any off-site improvements, nothing. So nothing's happened onsite. Nothing's happened offsite. It's been forever. We have a whole new set of standards that are appropriate and I'd be grateful for the Planning Commission to agree with staff and find this inactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that. I I appreciate that. And so seeing no one else wishing to speak, declare the public hearing closed. Now we're on to discussion. Vice Chair, do you want to go first?
Sorry, I'm having, I'm having unmuting issues. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I have those too.
No, I, so your comment at the end was where I was going, which was that we heard a lot of reasons from the callers for why this was not a good area for this development. But didn't hear much from the callers to dispute whether or not this was an active SP. However, I think that staff's, staff pretty clearly laid out why, why this is not considered an active SP at this time. And even the owner seemed to recognize that there had been limited action despite the meetings and other things that have taken place in the last year. I guess I have one question, which is, so I think, I think staff is pretty, I agree with staff that this seems to, that most likely we should find this SP inactive. But I had a question and it's noted in the end of the staff report that we should think about rezoning at a future meeting. I guess, what is that process then? I mean, is it something that the owner would then have a say in? It does seem like there's a lot of issues that need to be taken into consideration with that rezoning. But, you know, that's where I think we really get into addressing a lot of the concerns that were raised by the callers. And so I guess I'm just trying to understand what that process would be, what role the owner plays versus us versus council, kind of how this all would work.
Hi, this is Lisa. So typically the way that this works with a SP or PUD review is that the first step of the process is whether to find it active or inactive. The second would be to advise council to rezone. And so if that was the recommendation, then it would be the process of council member Rosenberg likely filing an application for rezoning. And we would work with him on what might be appropriate.
So that would not necessarily be done in consultation with the current owner? Is that, I mean, so they don't at this point have the ability to come back in and file for a different rezoning? It would have to be, it's handled by council and us. Is that, that's correct?
Commissioner, this is Bob Lehman. Normally what we would do is look at the land use policy as well and try to determine what the appropriate zoning district is per the land use policy. And I mean, there are, there are a lot of issues that we would have to look at here in terms of the floodplain and the access and we would factor a lot of those things in as well. But I think our first step is to kind of look at land use policy and make a determination of the appropriate zoning based on that.
Okay, okay. So I mean, it doesn't preclude any future development. It's just a, it's a more lengthy process. It sounds like. So I think, so just, and then for us in terms of process, since we are supposed to recommend that council rezone, if and when we get to the point of making a motion, do we have to clarify how and when that process would take place or we can just sort of say that's at a future time? That's a question for you, Bob or Lucy.
Yeah, hi, this is Lisa. So no, at this point, it's just a finding of an activity and then a determination of what the next step be, should be. So essentially the outlines, if you find something inactive, there are several different options. You could advise that the SP is appropriate and it remains, even if it's found inactive. Or you could advise that the property needs to be rezoned. And so it's at this point just, is it inactive or not and what should the next step be? And then, but you don't have to make any like timelines on the next step that we would work through that.
Okay, okay. That helps me. Thank you. I think in the past when we've seen this, it seemed like there was a really obvious next step. So this one is a little more confusing to me. But I... But, um, I agree with staff's recommendation. And I think that, uh, this is a really good opportunity for us to make sure that when this property is, is developed, it's developed responsibly in light of a lot of things that we have learned, um, since it was first, since the SP was, uh, first enacted in two thousand and seven. So I support staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Haines?
I too am going to support staff's recommendation. This is fairly straightforward for it to be inactive. I think they've done a good job.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. I too agree. This is a very, uh, you know, straightforward. I mean, four years has passed and, you know, no construction, no, uh, right-of-way acquisition. So as far as physical improvement or physical, uh, construction, everybody agreed. And I think so next thing we as a commissioner may consider is aggregate of action. And I understand as a property owner, developer, always have intent to develop. So with that intent, they may meet with the department head or staff and discuss with any and all appropriate, uh, department to discuss. But to me, it is just a intent. It does not constitute, uh, action. So therefore, I am, uh, confident, uh, there's no aggregate action for us to consider. So for that sense, uh, it's really clear cut, straightforward. This SP is inactive. And so I do agree with staff recommendation. So I understand at this point, uh, we do not need to recommend, uh, appropriate, uh, zoning. Uh, but just to, uh, find SP inactive.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lawson?
Oh, without getting too redundant, I, I believe the staff recommendation is very appropriate and would support a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Councilor Murphy?
Thank you. Um, I guess I'm excited that we actually have one that seems very straightforward, um, before us tonight. And I think it's very easy to find that this is a development that has had plenty of time to do something on it. They have not, and therefore it's inactive. So I support staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims.
Yes, um, it is really hard for me to stay out of what the neighborhood concerns are, but this is not what this case is about. I did go, as I told, um, the people that were listening two weeks ago, that I went and walked this entire place and I could not find one shred of evidence that any kind of construction had happened. So I agree with the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Tibbs.
I also, um, agree with staff recommendation and would like to make a motion to approve.
That's a proper motion.
Approve staff recommendation.
Yeah, it's a, it's that, uh, it's no longer active. Approve staff's recommendation. Thank you. That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Commissioner Haines?
Second.
Proper second. Any discussion if the commissioners would raise their icon hands and/or verbally state you'd like to speak? Seeing none, we are ready for roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Haines?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Lawson? Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson, we'll go back to you. I didn't get your aye or no. Ayes have it and we voted to, um, find the SP to be inactive and, uh, based on staff's recommendation. Thank you. And now we are on, on item number, check the paperwork here. Item number sixteen. And I believe that's.
Hi, Chair. This is Lisa. I will be presenting this item.
Okay. Excellent, Lisa. Go ahead.
Hi, item number sixteen is a street renaming. Um, this is a request to rename a portion of Blake Drive, which intersects with Sunnywood Drive and is disconnected from another portion of Blake Drive to be renamed to Sweet Oak Court. Um, you can see from this diagram that there are two segments to the existing Blake Drive. You have segment here labeled as A and segment here labeled as B. They are disconnected. Because they are disconnected, it can cause confusion from an E nine-one-one's, an emergency services, um, point of view. It can make it more difficult to get emergency services to the right location. For instance, if something shows up from point A and they have to get to point B, or in the inverse, it could take approximately seven minutes of travel time. There has actually been an instance where this has occurred. And so this was a recommendation to rename, um, by emergency services. Blake Drive was planned at some point to connect. However, there are topography, uh, there's topography as well as a stream that runs through this interceding piece. And so it may not be possible for it ever to connect. We did receive recommendations from both emergency service and fire to recommend the historical commission reviews all street renaming's and they'll make a report to the Metro Council, um, in advance of it being heard if there's any historical significance to the street name. And staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate that. We'll open this item up for public hearing. And I'm assuming that we are the applicant. Is that correct?
Hi, the applicant was, um, E nine-one-one as well as, um, the council member.
Oh, okay. Excellent. And so, um, do we have one of the, do we have the representative or the council member on, on the line? I think we, I think Councilman Rutherford had, uh, another.
Yes.
I see him though.
There we go.
Councilman Rutherford? There you go.
I am here, yes.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Uh, well, I, I had previously spoken on, on this issue.
Yes, yeah. I just wanted to say, did you, did you want to say anything else?
I, I didn't have anything else to add, uh, but I, I support the, the change.
Thank you, Councilman. That's all we needed.
Thank you.
Uh, I appreciate it. And then if there's anyone that calls and, and you can speak last, okay? So now we're on to calls, uh, from members of the public who wish to call in. Your screen should show, um, the call-in number now. You don't need to wait because we'll put you into a queue. When you begin your testimony, please state your name, address, and whether you support or oppose the item. We're not able to display the timer visually. Like I've said, um, before, you have two minutes to speak. Sean will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining of the two minutes and let you know when your time is up. And so while we, uh, wait on, um, folks to call in, Lisa, did we get any emails on this item?
Hi, Chairman. By way of explanation, the way that street renaming's work is when we get an application to rename, we notify all of the parties that would be impacted by the renaming. If we hear from any that are in opposition, then we set this public hearing at the planning commission. If we don't hear any opposition, then it can be administratively approved. In this case, upon initial notification, we did receive, um, one email in opposition and therefore we set the public hearing at planning commission.
Thank you. Great explanation. I appreciate that. Uh, Sean, do we have any callers on the line?
Chair, we don't currently have any callers in the queue. Since we haven't had any yet, we'll take a brief pause in case anyone's trying to reach us on this item, item sixteen, and then I'll check back in.
Thank you.
Chair, we have no callers in the queue for item sixteen.
Thank you. Seeing no callers. Councilman, anything? I just want to make sure we don't, uh, no one's called in. You good, are you good to go?
I, I'm good to go. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, uh, I declare the public hearing closed. And, um, since this issue seems pretty cut and dry to me, how about we try to, um, see if there's any discussion? And then if, if a commissioner would like, um, to make a motion. Is there any discussion? You can raise your icon hand or if you would like to, um, speak? Any discussion? All right, let's try to get a motion. Vice Chair, do you want to make a motion?
Chair, I will make a motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion? And is there a second? Second? Commissioner Tibbs?
Let me go. I'll second that.
It's proper motion and second. Any discussion on this item? If you would raise your icon or verbally state you would like to discuss? Seeing none, we are ready for a roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Haines?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Councilor Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Item sixteen is approved and we are now ready for, we are ready for item number seventeen. And just, uh, to clarify, um, on this particular item, uh, just to let the commissioners know, this particular item was considered before we closed the public hearing. And so we are just on, um, uh, discussion. And so, um, I can't, uh, Lisa, do we still do the presentation or do we go right into discussion on the item?
Yes, Chair. We would run through the presentation and Logan can give you an update on, um, the, on the changes that have been made since you last heard the item.
Yes, thank you. Perfect. Logan, you ready?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Again, Logan Elliott, and I'll be presenting item seventeen on behalf of the Planning Department. Next slide, please. Just to provide a refresher, the request is to modify the villages of Riverwood UDO district, uh, to change the permitted land use from seven hundred and seventy-six assisted living units to two hundred and ten multifamily residential units. Next slide, please. Staff's recommendation is to approve with condition. Next slide. As a reminder, we're looking at section M tonight. The villages of Riverwood UDO master plan here that was approved in two thousand and four, originally planned for this section to contain seven hundred and seventy-six assisted living units or two thousand three hundred and twenty-eight beds. And the request is to modify this. Next slide, please. This application now proposes to modify the units to commit two hundred and ten multifamily units. These units would be a new building typology for UDO and would be a townhome style unit developed through a horizontal property regime. Um, the townhomes have similar regulatory standards to the existing townhomes in the UDO. And as a result of community engagement, the applicant has undergone in the past month, the applicant has added standards to the proposed building typology. Next slide, please. Here we are seeing the conditions that staff has worked with Public Works and the applicant to generate, um, from, taken from the direction that the planning commission provided at the March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. An additional condition is shown here on the screen that was not included in the published staff report. This can, this condition aims at requiring these townhome units to have the same building materials and a similar configuration to the existing townhomes in the development. And otherwise, the conditions aim to address the concerns, uh, expressed by the planning commission at the March twenty-fifth meeting. These include requiring a traffic study with the final site plan application, requiring alleys and streets to be public with this development, and requiring the interior units to front onto open space or to public street. Next slide, please. Uh, staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions included in the staff report as well as the additional condition concerning the building materials that were shown on the screen there. Uh, this completes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Appreciate that. So commissioners, we, we aren't going to open the, the public hearing back up. And so we, we roll right into, um, discussion. Commissioner Tibbs, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm struggling with this just a lot, not in a bad way, honestly. I mean, I still pretty much agree with staff's recommendation for it. I don't have any, like, the more I thought about it, I don't really have anything really extravagant to add really to what is already, you know, what we've kind of talked about with last time. So I'm going to take the easy way out this time. I think I'm just going to listen to my fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims.
Uh, yes, I, um, I specifically requested that there be some kind of green space, dedicated green space other than this dedicated conservation greenway. When we get this many families together, where do children ride bikes? Where do they play? How do families come together? And that was not mentioned at all as one of the conditions. I did try to call the staff a couple of times on this, but haven't heard back yet. So wondering how we're meeting that condition?
Yes, Commissioner Sims.
That's a question.
Logan Elliott here. Um, the condition, um, number five there states that the interior units will front onto an open space. The applicant also, uh, was interested in allowing units to also front onto a public street. They didn't want the condition to read that every interior unit was required to front onto an open space. But, uh, that condition there would, would require units to front onto an open space.
And where does, where did the feedback from the neighborhood, they, they have through the series of this, including a recent letter from the Board of Directors for the entire villages of Riverwood, ask for some type of park? Where did we, where did we address that at all beside this open space?
Hi, Commissioner. This is Lisa. Um, with the, with the review of the final site plan, there will be internal open space, similar to open space that is throughout the villages of Riverwood, including other phases in addition to the greenway easement. Um, so open space will be included.
And, well, I'm not sure that's exactly what the neighborhood was asking for. So I'll get, I mean, I don't know how to help the neighborhood get what it wants and needs with as many children and families that will be there. But, uh, I think the other conditions they asked for was changing the facade, which you addressed. No parking lots or line parking spaces. I think that can be handled by you guys. A driveway and single garage at each townhome is probably not. I mean, that's something that I don't know if the commission can actually make that a condition. But I do think really, uh, meeting the needs of the residents since they really came for many years expecting that to be much more open than it's going to be, that we be really attentive to the kind of green space or open space that we give to them. Other than that.
This is, this is Lucy Kemp with the Planning Department. What I asked the staff to do was to go back and review carefully what the commission directed following that public hearing.
Right.
And there's been quite a bit of, of back and forth, um, on this particular project. And we really wanted to take our, our guidance from, from the commission and that discussion that happened at the public hearing at the time. And so our goal was to try to hear that, that feedback and incorporate those, those standards. I don't know the date on the letter that we received from the, the board of, of the, the HOA. But, but we, at that point, because we had had several public hearings, we, we wanted to take our guidance from, from you and the commission.
Right. This letter is dated April the fifth. And I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, I, I guess when we opened, when I had open space in my own, what I request was a park. I think that translated to open space. But I just want somehow to be really attentive to the. But I just want somehow to be really attentive to the neighborhood because they have given big time in this and they are still adamant and there's a lot of, lot of feedback to us about making sure we do that. So that's just what I'm laying on the table. So I just want to make sure, I don't know if there's a way for us to make sure when we get to the open space that we really listen to them or we help, you know, there's some way they can help design it or that it does meet their needs and it's not just a green patch of, which I've seen some of our developers do. So I don't know. I, I need to ask Lisa and you, our director, how do we make sure that this gets to be what the neighborhood really needs and wants?
Lisa, can you walk through the steps that we will take following it? Assuming that this is approved, just sort of what, what we would anticipate in terms of next steps? And, and how or what items would be included in that review? Yes. Hi, this is Lisa. If this were approved as a modification, the next step would be submission of a final site plan. A final site plan would be a detailed site plan showing the layout of the units along with open space. And we would review the open space as we have other sections of the villages of Riverwood to ensure that it is centrally located and usable open space that's accessible from many of the units. You know, sometimes that can be several areas of open space spread throughout a development. There's open space currently in the villages of Riverwood, villages of Riverwood that is accessible and usable. And we will ensure that once again, there is, there is accessible, usable open space within this phase. And so we will do that through review of a final site plan.
I appreciate that. I just wanted, as a matter of record, that we just didn't forget this. And it was one of the strongest requests that they had throughout the whole process. So thank you both for just, I just want it to be a matter of record that we know that what they want and need is some space for their family and children. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. Council lady Murphy?
Thank you, Chairman. I think that, I mean, we definitely have heard this project for a while. And I appreciate that the development and the community have been meeting for a long time. And, you know, sometimes you can reach just an impasse. I think both sides have given a lot on this. I think changing the, last time we spoke, I think one of the big things was changing the roads from being private to public. And I'm really glad that that could be worked out because that can lead to a nightmare situation in, in a development like this where this is in the rear and changing, changing the, the game kind of halfway through the development. You know, I also think adding the condition that it be consistent with the rest of the existing built environment is really important for the cohesiveness of this development. Again, even though it is tucked in the back, I think it is important that they, you know, that it, it continues to flow throughout. And so while this isn't maybe the most perfect thing for everybody, I think that this has reached a compromise phase that there might not be more compromise to be found. And then it might be time to just go ahead and approve this. Because I, I do think this has gotten as far as, as everybody can get on it potentially. Now, is that great? Not always. But again, I think that we've, we've reached a lot of compromises here. And, and that's where I think our job as commissioners are, is to, is to find those compromises and to, to approve.
Thank you, Council lady. Commissioner Lawson?
Catch up with some things on, on this particular application. So I'm going to pass for right now.
Commissioner Johnson? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think at the last meeting, three condition or clarification is one, new street to be public, which is clearly incorporated. And then traffic studies requirement, which is clearly incorporated. And then green space, amenity for the neighborhood. So that's in condition number five. So it written as an open space, but I think with our discussion and good question from Commissioner Sims, we understand that open space is not passive open space, but rather active open space to add it to the amenity to the community. So with that, I think we are, I am getting comfortable approving with this all added condition and, you know, communities wish and our wish into this going into when you do the final review. So I'm getting really comfortable with this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Haynes? Oh, I believe Commissioner Haynes had to drop off. Vice Chair?
I agree with Commissioner Johnson. I think that, you know, we had a long discussion about this and provided a direction to staff for the certain conditions that, or the concerns that we had. And I think that staff has come back and addressed those concerns. And so I think at this point, I am in favor of the staff recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and you're the last to speak.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approves staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Council lady Murphy?
Second of the motion.
That's a proper second. Any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand and/or verbally state you would like to speak? Seeing none, we are ready for a roll call vote on item seventeen. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Chairman?
Commissioner?
This is Commissioner Sims. I, I had my hand up, but just, I know sometimes you can't see me because I'm at the bottom, just for a question before we go to vote.
Yes, please.
Yeah. What Commissioner Johnson stated, I thought was really strong. Is there any need for us to talk about this being active space and not just a green space? But that this actually be an amenity for the neighborhood?
I think it's pretty clear with the intent of our discussion.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, okay. So we, we've had a proper motion, proper second. Any discussion? Let's make sure. Thank you, Commissioner Sims. We, I don't want to go too fast. I did miss your hand. I apologize. Thank you for interrupting. All right, so we're back to the vote. Vice Chair Farr. Vice Chair Farr? We'll come back to Vice Chair Farr. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ayes have it and item seventeen is adopted with the intent of active green space. Thank you. All right, so we are now on to item number nineteen. Moving right along. And I think Jason, is, is Jason going to present nineteen? And
Anyone hear me?
Oh, there we go. Go ahead, Jason. I can hear you now.
This is Jason Swagger. I will be presenting item nineteen. Next slide. This is a request to rezone a property located at nine twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue North. Property is outlined in red on this slide. Next slide. This, here's a better view of the property and it is outlined in blue. It is approximately sixty-nine hundred square feet in size and located just south of Jackson Street. The immediate area surrounding the property is mostly single family. Next slide. Staff is recommending disapproval. Next slide. The existing zoning is single family residential RS three point seven five. It requires a minimum lot size of thirty-seven fifty square feet and would permit up to one residential unit on this property. Next slide. The proposed zoning is one and two family residential R six. It requires a minimum of six thousand square foot lot size and would permit up to two residential units on this property. Next slide. This is in the downtown community plan. The policy is urban neighborhood maintenance. The site is also within the Hope Gardens supplemental policy. The neighborhood maintenance policy is intended to preserve the existing overall character of the area. The overall character in this, this is, on this stretch of Eleventh Avenue North is single family. The Hope Gardens supplemental policy provides additional guidance and is intended to preserve the Hope Garden neighborhood while accommodating new housing as well as a mixture, a mixed use of, at key locations. The policy includes several districts. The district that applies to this property is consistent with the maintenance policy and is intended for this area to remain single family. Next slide. Staff finds that the proposed R six zoning district is not consistent with the policies that apply to the property. R six would, would permit a duplex. A duplex is not consistent with the overall single family character intended to be maintained under the policy. And in conclusion, staff is recommending disapproval.
Thank you, Jason. So we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant on the line?
Yes, this is Brendan Williams, Brendan Development. We submitted the applicant. Have built a couple of homes in that area, in the Hope Gardens area. Got a lot of complaints about the large massing and the scales of the homes. So it would still be single family homes detached. It still goes through the MDHA review. We really just want to accommodate the neighborhood. You know, we built a, a same lot size, fifty wide lot, four thousand square feet home, you know, next to eighteen, fifteen hundred square feet home. I think the average lot size in the area widthwise is around twenty-five in width. I mean, we're the largest lot remaining on Eleventh Avenue. I mean, we, you could really throw a rock and be downtown. So we really wanted to just kind of reduce the massing, not build another forty-five hundred square feet home, gigantic. You know, the neighborhood needs more affordable housing. This will allow more density. Understand the policy, it goes through the MDHA review, so it would still lie within what the neighborhood would want. We did do a neighborhood along with Freddie. They were in support of it. It just made sense. I get the policy. The policy might be a little dated, given the area and the close proximity to downtown. Really wanted to just, you know, we're, you know, going to develop it, but really just wanted to take the neighborhood more into account versus building a gigantic, enormous, large massing of the home. It just made sense. A lot of the neighbors, they, they, you know, their average sized home is, you know, roughly, you know, I think the most you'll probably see in Hope Gardens is twenty-two, twenty-three hundred is probably a large, considered a large home in the area just because it's, this is how it was built and the historic of it. So just wanted to take that into consideration. I, I understand the policy and the maintenance and all that. But just wanted to take of what, what's going on in today and, and a lot of the feedback from the neighbors. You know, we built one on Jackson Street and got a lot of several complaints, not just from MDHA. The councilman also received a lot of complaints. So we're really just trying to take into account, want to create some more density, especially given what's going on in the real estate market. So that, that's all I have. But, you know, would definitely like you guys' consideration, you know, for, for allowing this. I think there is, you look at the map, there is some two residential, single family homes on that street within a close proximity. And it's just, just made, we're just trying to make it to where it makes sense for the neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you calling in and we'll save two minutes for your rebuttal. All right, so now we're on to the portion for folks to call in. And so members of the public should call in now. Your screen should show that call in number. As a reminder, only call in on the current case. Please, when you begin your testimony, state your name and address and whether you oppose or for this particular item. Sean, well, you have two minutes to speak. Sean will let you know when you have thirty seconds left and we'll let you know when the two minutes is up. And so while we wait on the callers to call in, Lisa, did we get any emails on this item?
Hi, Chairman, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Sean, do we have any callers?
Chair, we don't currently have any callers in the queue for this item. Since we've just started it, we'll take a brief pause in case anyone's trying to reach us on item nineteen and I'll check back in.
Thank you.
Chair, we do have a caller for this item and you have the first caller in the meeting now.
You're welcome. You may begin.
Chair, this is Sean with the call center. The call was dropped kind of right as, as we got to you. We're going to take a moment in case they've had an issue and are trying to call us back. So thank you for your patience. We'll check right back in.
Thank you. Sean, any sign of the caller?
Chair, we do have the caller back on the line and I believe the caller is now live in the meeting.
Okay, welcome and you may begin. Caller?
Yes, I'm, um, I'll pick up a claim at, um, North Avenue.
All right, I can barely hear you, sir.
I was, I was given a call and said that that was, uh, hell for me. Uh, located nine twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue North.
Did, you, you have a claim? What was that? I, I didn't get that. Sorry.
Chair, this is Sean in the call center. We've actually, we've taken the caller out of the meeting for the moment. We're going to clarify if they intend to be giving comment on this item or, or maybe have the wrong number. Bear with us just a moment.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks for everybody's patience. I appreciate it. Want to make sure we take care of everybody.
Chair, this is Sean in the call center. I wanted to clarify for, for the record that we, we spoke further with that individual. They received a mailing about this meeting, which was what they were referencing with the mail. But they didn't, they just weren't sure if they, they needed to call, but they didn't have a comment to share. At this time, we've given them directions on how to reach us or their council member if they have comments in the future. But they, they don't need to comment in the meeting today. And with that, we don't have any other calls on this item.
All right. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. And so seeing no other callers, the applicant, the And so seeing no other callers, the applicant, do you have anything else you'd like to share for rebuttal or?
Yeah, I mean, just really, you know, we want to just kind of create more, you know, affordable housing, more density. I mean, we're just really in such a close proximity to downtown, just, just wants to make sense for the neighbors. We had a Hope Gardens Neighborhood Association meeting a few weeks ago with Freddie, received tremendous support for, especially showed them the design of the homes, you know, wanted to keep it, you know, especially the neighbors, you know, they're, you know, 1500 square feet, small one-story homes and just want to create, reduce that buffing in size, especially since the close proximity to the, to the downtown area and Hope Gardens area. And then received support from Freddie O'Connell as well. So that's all I have. I understand the maintenance policy is a little, little dated and wanted to try to do some research to where we can update those policies, which I think Hope Gardens is looking into. But, you know, haven't seen a lot of development in this area and I just wanted to, wanted to kind of create something that's more sort of affordable within that area and don't want to create such a large home. Obviously, you know, what 4,000 square feet in Nashville goes for nowadays and wanted to reduce that just to create something, some continuity within the neighborhood. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you and appreciate that. And then do we have, I don't think Councilman O'Connell's on the line. Lisa, do you see Councilman anywhere? The Councilman?
Hi, no, Councilman O'Connell is not on the line. I did receive correspondence from here and it's not clear at this point if he does or, if he does support this item.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so seeing no one else wishing to speak, a declared public hearing closed. And so we are ready for discussion. How about we start with, we always try, I always try to take turns. So Commissioner Johnson, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd be happy to. I think, you know, this is another clear cut to me, T four neighborhood maintenance. Of course, you know, every urban area is different. So some even neighborhood maintenance surrounding the area has mismatched and hodgepodge of the different housing types. But in this specific neighborhood, seems like a midsection, as Jason stated, has lots of a single family home and especially this particular property located in the midsection of midsection. So I really don't see we, you know, deviate from the underlying policy. So I am in support of staff recommendation to disapprove this zone change.
Commissioner Lawson.
I would accuse Commissioner Johnson of stealing my script, but she's, she's hit it right on head of nail about this particular area. And I, I think the staff's recommendations are totally appropriate and would approve and would support their recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council Lady Murphy?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to say that this is interesting. This is clearly the staff is correct. This does not meet the policy. And I guess my advice to the developer or developers that are bringing zone changes like this is that you do not have to max out your setbacks. You do not have to build a very large home. If you want to build an affordable house, you can do that without going for a zone change to increase the density that's against policy. If, if neighbors are complaining about the scale and the massing, you don't have to build a large house. You can match the surrounding scale and massing. And I just wanted to, to, you know, say that because I think staff has hit the nail on the head here and this needs to be disapproved.
Thank you, Council. Commissioner Sims?
I strongly agree with the staff's recommendations and I have no questions or comments.
Commissioner Tibbs?
I, well, I appreciate the, the spirit of the developer. I agree with Council Lady Murphy. There are other ways to do it and definitely more appropriate ways and definitely I support staff analysis and I think I can't make a motion. I think there's someone else left, but I would be in favor.
All right. Vice Chair, you're last. Thank you, Commissioner.
I also support staff's recommendation. I mean, I know Hope Gardens well. It is a hodgepodge of development pattern. I mean, if you look at the lot lines, you do see some of everything. So, you know, I, I do, I am sympathetic to the developer and what they are trying to do. Yes, I agree with Council Lady Murphy and Commissioner Tibbs that there's other ways to do it, but I also think that when you look at the development pattern in this area, you see that, you know, it, some of everything goes. But I think staff is, I think staff's recommendation is correct and I will make a motion to approve.
A motion, the motion is to?
Motion to, I'm sorry, to disapprove the, the item to, yes, to approve staff's recommendation of a disapproval.
Thank you.
Can I ask, can I ask the Commissioner?
Oh, so Mr. Applicant, unfortunately, the public hearing is no longer available. And so what, what I would, so no, you, you can't, the short answer is no. But what I would suggest is that you, you can call the, call Lisa Mulligan and she can kind of walk through this with you and, and what next steps are at the planning commission. Lisa, is that, is that okay? And then we'll get?
Hi Chairman, yes, of course.
And so if you'll call, the, the planning department asked for Lisa. And so unfortunately, you know, the public hearing portion of, of this is over. So thank you though for, for calling and being part of the, the process. And so we're now on just the, only the planning commission can speak. And so we have a motion to accept staff's recommendation of a disapproval, which is a proper motion by the vice chair. Is there a second? Commissioner Tibbs?
Second.
Proper second. Any discussion, if you would raise your icon hand? And/or verbally state that you'd like to discuss. Seeing then, we are ready for roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Haynes. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Haynes left. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Ayes have it and this item is disapproved per staff's recommendation. And we are on to item 28 and B. And I think that's, Harriet, is it? She going to present?
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Great. Good evening. My name is Harriet Jameson Brooks. The next item on the agenda is item 28, a request to establish an urban design overlay district or UDO. Next slide please. The request is to apply an urban design overlay district to various properties located south of Lafayette Street and north of Wedgewood Avenue, send commercial services, industrial warehousing and distribution, mixed use limited alternative, office residential, one and two family residential R six, one and two family residential alternative R six A, multi-family residential alternative RM 20A and specific plan. Next slide please. Staff's recommendation is to reopen the public hearing and approve of conditions. Next slide. The current zoning is mostly one and two family residential R six and R six A and includes commercial service, industrial restrictive, industrial warehousing and distribution, mixed use limited, alternative, office and residential OR 20 and specific plan. Next slide please. Urban design overlays are intended to allow for the application and implementation of special design standards in a manner otherwise not ensured by the application of the conventional bulk landscaping and parking standards of the zoning code. So what is an urban design overlay? A UDO is a zoning tool that applies development or site design standards over a given area. UDO standards do not replace the base zoning, but work with the base zoning and have the same force and effect as base zoning. And UDOs protect existing character or create new character for a given area. The current policy is mostly P four urban neighborhood evolving with civic, open space and conservation. In 2019, the Wedgewood Houston Chestnut Hill Planning Study was adopted by the Planning Commission. The study was developed through an 18-month participatory process that involves the collaboration of planning staff with community stakeholders to establish a clear vision and provide detailed information and solutions to guide the future physical and regulatory characteristics of these two neighborhoods. During the planning process, it became clear that more detailed guidelines for redevelopment in character areas two and three, the primarily residential portions of the study area, were necessary. The planning study identified key issues affordability and displacement and community character to be addressed through best practices of planning and design in these areas. Therefore, a core recommendation from the study was to establish a contextual residential infill urban design overlay or UDO paired with appropriate zone changes to achieve desired objectives. Next please. As an implementation tool of the 2019 planning study, the objective of the UDO is to address increased demand for residential capacity while maintaining essential neighborhood character, enable housing diversity by incentivizing small-scale multi-family development, and prioritize contextual growth over time in appropriate areas. For the document, the geographic area was divided into six character areas, three neighborhoods, two neighborhood centers and one corridor. The UDO standards are organized into two primary sections. First are the UDO standards. These standards apply to all properties within the UDO and include general best practices for the design of walkable urban neighborhoods. And secondly, are character area specific standards. These standards guide the development of a specific neighborhood, corridor or center and utilize height, setbacks, massing and impervious surface ratio to ensure appropriate patterns of development that correspond to the study plan's guidance. Next please. As noted previously, the 2019 planning study had a, had a robust community engagement process that set the vision and goals of the UDO. The purpose of the engagement and feedback process for the UDO as an implementation tool of that study is to refine if and how the standards are working to implement the vision of the 2019 plan, not create a new vision. Since the February 25th deferral, there have been six online meetings co-hosted with SNAP and TAG, the local neighborhood associations, as well as many one-on-one and small group conversations. Two rounds of drafts have been posted on Nashville.gov during that time in response to the feedback that was obtained. The proposed urban design overlay guides infill development in a rapidly evolving area of South Nashville. It supports and provides standards for a mixture of housing types to ensure appropriate development patterns and intensity, given the land use policy, existing infrastructure and proximity to arterial boulevards and corridors. The urban neighborhood evolving policy describes successful infill development as considering and being sensitive to things such as timing and elements of the existing developed character, such as the street network, block structure and proximity to centers and corridors. Paired with zone changes, the UDO provides a necessary tool for implementing the goals of the, of the Wedgewood Houston Chestnut Hill Planning Study, namely mitigating, mitigating housing unaffordability and displacement and retaining neighborhood character. While the base zone change may help address the unaffordability and displacement issue through entitlements for greater density, the standards within the UDO ensure the development of an appropriate height, massing and density that retain the neighborhood character. Next slide please. Substantial changes have been made to the UDO following the public review and deferral period. First, the parcels at 49 and 51 Worf Avenue and 1011, 1013, 1015, 1017, 1019, 1302, 1304, 1306 and 1308, First Avenue South have been removed from the UDO boundary. Second revisions to the standards of the document have been addressed in response to community feedback. Third, the effective date of BDO will occur on June 8th, 2021 to follow passage of the bill at Metro Council and the mayor's signature. Next slide please. Staff recommends the public hearing be reopened and approval with the following conditions. First, removal of properties at 49 and 51 Worf Avenue and 1011, 1013, 1015, 1017, 1019, 1302, 1304, 1306 and 1308, First Avenue South from the boundary. Second, amendment of the UDO document to incentivize the retention of existing structures by incorporating new thresholds or triggers that respect the existing conditions to a site, such as driveway width and existing setbacks that might otherwise not comply with the UDO if a project is retaining or enhancing an existing structure. Third, amendment of a foundation, of foundation height standards on page 18 to 21 for all character areas within the, within the UDO document to read. Foundation height shall be 18 to 36 inches above finished grade at the front facade. Deviations to foundation height standards may be considered administratively by Metro Planning Commission staff and will consider the proposed structure's relationship to the street. Fourth amendment of the driveway standards on page 12 in the UDO document to read. For duplex and triplex properties, driveway shall be no more than 18 feet in width for the first 20 to 40 feet in depth. And lastly, adherence to an effective date of June 8th, 2021, following Metro Council passage and the mayor's signature. And that concludes my presentation about the urban design overlay, but I was planning on just rolling right into item 28B with the associated, which is the associated zone change, if that is all right with you?
Very appropriate.
Commissioners?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, so I also have the next item on the agenda, 28B, the rezoning associated with the Wedgewood Houston Chestnut Hill Open Design Overlay or UDO. Next slide please. The request is to rezone various properties to various zoning districts located south of Lafayette Street and north of Wedgewood Avenue, paired with the Wedgewood Houston Chestnut Hill UDO. Staff recommends approval with removal of properties currently zoned SP and certain properties along Worf Avenue and First Avenue South if the UDO is approved. If the UDO is not approved, staff recommends disapproval. Staff also recommends reopening the public hearing. The current zoning is mostly one and two family residential R six and R six A and includes specific plan SP, commercial service BS, mixed use limited alternative MULA and office and residential OR 20. Next please. The proposed zoning is mixed use limited alternative, no short-term rental, MULA NS, multi-family residential alternative, no short-term rental, RM 20A NS, commercial service, no short-term rental, CS NS, and office and residential, no short-term rental, OR 20 NS. The policy is P four urban neighborhood evolving with civic, open- The policy is P four urban neighborhood evolving with civic, open space, and conservation. When considering rezonings, the policy guidance identifies several factors for consideration, including the relationship of the site to centers and corridors, the size of the site, and the character of adjacent policy areas. The site includes several urban mixed-use corridors and arterials, Chestnut Street, Second Avenue South, and Hart Street. It is proximate to Lafayette Street, Fourth Avenue South, and Wedgwood Avenue. Next slide, please. The Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill Planning Study, adopted in 2019, argues that to ensure that the design objectives associated with the community character policies are realized for new development, rezoning is needed. Next, please. The 2019 Planning Study identifies appropriate zoning districts for each character area and sub-district and provides guidance on when more intense zoning districts should be used. Specifically for character areas two and three, the plan states to be effective, these U D Os should be paired with rezonings to increase entitlements and appropriate locations to achieve the mix of housing units envisioned by these character areas and sub-districts. It notes zone changes, including design-based zone changes to achieve these specific planning goals, will be evaluated based on their ability to achieve the envisioned future character, level of change proposed, extent of community support and benefit, and the particular characteristics of the property being rezoned. Next, please. Paired with the Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill U D O, the proposed zone changes provide a necessary tool for implementing the goals of the Planning Study, namely mitigating housing unaffordability and displacement and retaining neighborhood character. While the standards within the U D O ensure development of an appropriate height, massing, and density that retain the neighborhood character, the zone change lays the framework for mitigating unaffordability and displacement through entitlements for greater density. The specific districts proposed, primarily R M twenty A N S within the neighborhoods and M U L A N S, a neighborhood center, match the recommendations of the Planning Study. Given the proximity to the corridor surrounding policy districts, access opportunities, and policy guidance from the 2019 Planning Study, the proposed zoning districts are appropriate. Next, please. Since the filing deadline and deferral period, all properties zoned S P, as well as those at 49 and 51 Worf Avenue and 1011, 1013, 1015, 1017, 1019, 1302, 1304, 1306, and 1308 First Avenue South have been removed from the boundary. These have been removed at the request of staff to reflect the objectives of the 2019 Planning Study and the desires of property owners obtained through the public review process. These modifications are appropriate. Next, please. Staff recommends approval with removal of properties currently zoned S P and properties at 49 and 51 Worf Avenue and 1011, 1013, 1015, 1017, 1019, 1302, 1304, 1306, and 1308 First Avenue South if the U D O is approved. If the U D O is not approved, staff recommends disapproval. Staff also recommends reopening the public hearing. This concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And so commissioners, procedurally, the staff has recommended that we open the public hearing. You know, we always try to be, make sure that we have lots of public input, and personally, I think that's a very appropriate step for us. So procedurally, so we're really on discussion of opening back up the public hearing. So and we probably, per our attorney, probably need to take a vote on that. And so is there discussion on opening back up the public hearing? Vice Chair, do you have any comments?
No, I think we should open up the public hearing.
Okay, and why don't we try this? Why don't we, I think probably everybody on the commission, knowing everyone, that that's probably what we want to do. So let's get it in proper.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Well, I have a procedural question. I'm in favor of opening the public hearing, but procedurally, if we do that, have we done any advertising to the public or allow them to know that this thing could be open for public hearing during our eating, our hearing today?
I believe so, but let's ask Lisa. Lisa.
Hi Chairman, yes, we did renotice because when the item was deferred last time, we had to renotice for the council public hearing, and so we ran ahead and put the planning commission date on it as well.
Commissioner Lawson does that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand and/or verbally state you'd like to discuss. So Vice Chair, do you want to make a vote? Let's go ahead and just repeat that because we were in discussion.
Sure, I will make a motion that we reopen the public hearing for these two items.
Yes, so procedurally commissioners, this is what would happen, just for clarification. We'd open the public hearing for item number 20A and 20B. The public hearing would be for both items at the same time, and then we would take separate votes on A and B at the end. And so that's a proper motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Lawson seconds it. And any other discussion? If you would raise your icon hand and verbally state you'd like to discuss. And so we're ready for a roll call vote to open the public hearing back up. Vice Chair Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Council Lady Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Sims.
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs.
Aye.
Aye, it's habit. Public hearing is back open, and so we've had the presentation. And so the applicant is the, is my understanding is the councilman, and I do see Councilman Sledge. Councilman Sledge, you want to go ahead and?
Sure Chair, thank you. And I'll be brief because I do want to be able to get to the public hearing. You've seen all the public engagement that the planning staff has led just since the deferral. I, in fact, followed up with SNAP and TAG leadership just yesterday. I have another call with SNAP leadership tomorrow morning, and we have discussed sort of additional items that I think you'll hear probably in public hearing that we've agreed to. So there has been extremely robust public engagement on this issue. I think we're probably north of 15 public meetings at this point. One thing that I will say before it opens up is, as y'all probably already gathered and as was discussed a little bit last time, this is a pretty extraordinary document. It is a, it is something that we have not done before in the city, so it has required a level of scrutiny that I think is appropriate and also one that the planning staff has been even more amazing at than they typically are. So I'll leave it to that and can loop back, obviously, in the public hearing, but I cannot stress enough the thanks I have for the residents who've participated and for the planning staff who've led this process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. We are current, you know, we're, this is the public hearing, so we opened the public hearing, the councilman as the applicant went first. And so now we are ready to take calls from the public. We really appreciate everybody calling in on this really interesting and complex issue. I appreciate the councilman and all of the public. It means a lot to us, and I appreciate the staff team, the planning department, for all their hard work on this particular item. And so please call in now, no need to wait because you'll be put in the queue. This is our last item that we're hearing tonight. When you begin your testimony, please state your name and your address and whether you oppose or are for the particular item. We're not able to display the timer, and so you have two minutes to speak. Sean, and unfortunately she has to interrupt verbally, so she'll let you know when you have 30 seconds, and we'll let you know when your time's up, and we appreciate everybody doing that. And so we are ready now for emails. Lisa, any emails?
On this item?
Hi Chairman, we have received a number of emails on this item. I would like to point out that for this item, we actually had a specific email address that was set up to provide an opportunity for members of the public to provide feedback to staff as we worked through this process. And so we have emails going all the way back to October. Many of them express support for some parts of the plan, opposition for some parts of the plan, and we have numerous emails from the same people as we worked through the process. And so it's not as easy to give sort of our normal support or opposition on this one. I would just note that we actually had a specific email, and we received many as we worked through the process.
Thank you, very helpful, and appreciate y'all being so available for public input. Very good idea, the email. And so now we're ready to take callers. Sean, do we have any callers in the queue?
Yes Chair, we do. We'll get the first one queued up, and I'll let you know when they're in the meeting.
Thank you.
And Chair, you have the first caller.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nick. I lived at 1106 B Second Avenue South from 2015 to February 2021. And after a move six weeks ago, I currently live at 908 Woodmont Boulevard in District 25. Tonight, I am representing Trimble Action Group, or TAG, which is Chestnut Hills 501 T three Neighborhood Association. I have served as TAG secretary since January 2019. Tonight, I am speaking in support of these two cases, items 20A and 20B, on the agenda. As the organizational representative for Trimble Action Group, I will speak for no more than five minutes. I want to thank you all for your service on this commission. While this is not unique to our neighborhood, we receive regular mail from planning Chestnut Hill, and we're appreciative of the work that all of you at the commission do to support building in Nashville that works for everyone. I will reassure you that we did receive a renotice for the public hearing on the stated date. I can't overstate, as the councilman said, how much collaboration has been invested. Think if we had a nickel for every hour, we might be able to help buy the exit in. But I digress. All mentioned that TAG was founded in the early 2000s to advocate for the needs of the neighbors and the neighborhood. The organization's name precedes our current neighborhood name, which was changed from Cameron Trimble to Chestnut Hill in 2005. Of course, the neighborhood has a rich history dating back to the time Port Negra was built in the Civil War and before. Chestnut Hill is one of Nashville's oldest black neighborhoods, evidenced by our historic street names and landmark historic buildings like the Cameron School and Shay Hubbard House. In recent years, we have re-energized TAG to have regular meetings with neighbors, business owners, and Nashville services, expand our volunteer board, organize activities and share information, and raise funds to operate and meet neighborhood needs. Today, we are here to discuss the U D O, something that neighborhood leaders, neighbors, and developers have been working toward for several years. I had the opportunity to serve on the 2019 Planning Study Task Force toward the tail end of this, several years long. And I was very glad to read the first draft of the U D O in December 2020. My initial reaction was that planning really listens to what neighbors share through the planning study workshops and charrettes, and that this feedback was reflected in the draft U D O. Since December, we have had regular meetings, information sessions, listening sessions, and conversations to encourage neighbors to further engage. The planning department staff have been incredibly responsive, and they have done their job to sift through feedback, identify an action revision, or in other cases respectfully reject suggested edits with thoughtful explanation. TAG has encouraged engagement through email to our 150-person distribution list and facilitation of two U D O-specific Chestnut Hill-focused conversations. All of this is to say that we've heavily engaged with neighbors for feedback, and we're excited to encourage advancement of legislation. In our letter of support transmitted earlier this week, we wrote about conditional support expecting removal of the N S designation preventing short-term rentals. Our interest in removing that designation remains valid in the medium term. However, in conversation yesterday with Councilmember Sledge, we aligned that the designation makes sense for the short term. We will work with Councilmember Sledge to apply an owner-occupied overlay in the future or reconsider the N S designation once non-owner-occupied short rentals are no longer allowed in January 2022. In today's hearing, you may hear individuals articulate that they believe the process has been rushed, that their imperfect requirements for setbacks, heights, or driveway width, which require adjustment, or that they simply want to see the entire U D O shelved. In my personal capacity, I believe that these are self-serving criticisms. On the whole, the U D O is good for the neighborhood. It is an expected outcome that the U D O reduces one's ability to maximize profits or return on investment by means of looking out for the future of Chestnut Hill and for our posterity. Having spent the last hour reading through submitted comments, I'm disappointed to see boilerplate comments in the opposition submitted by several public commentators. Most disappointing, some of these individuals are neighbors of ours who did not make an effort to engage in public discussion. TAG believes that the U D O is a necessary next step to preserve the rich history and character of our neighborhood as inevitable growth happens across Nashville. The U D O provides a framework which appropriately sized and character development continues in Chestnut Hill and increases the opportunity to create new housing that is accessible in Nashvilleians with diverse financial capabilities. We believe that the U D O protects the needs of the neighborhood for decades to come with appropriate consideration for the wishes all at home today. Thank you for your service on this commission, and thank you for considering TAG's position on the U D O.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Next caller.
Thank you.
Here you have the next caller.
All right, you may begin.
Hello, my name is Katie Rudowski. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Katie Rudowski, and I live at 1247 Martin Street. I am representing SNAP, otherwise known as South Nashville Action People or otherwise referred to as Wedgwood Houston's Neighborhood Organization tonight. And I am the current board chair, speaking on behalf of SNAP in support of the Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill U D O, items number 20A and 20B. I would also like to request the five-minute timeframe to speak tonight.
Yes.
First and foremost, you, thank you. First and foremost, thank you for your time tonight, Planning Commissioners. Since late December of 2020, SNAP has spent countless hours meeting with neighbors, developers, landowners, metro planning staff, TAG, Councilman Sledge, and others to review and refine a cohesive U D O that inspires confidence among all stakeholders. SNAP is supportive in the context that addresses our neighbors' goals and key issues which have been outlined in the 2019 Wedgwood Houston-Chesnut Hill Planning Study. I think we can all agree that a few months ago, the U D O was nowhere near perfect, and there were a lot of revisions that needed to take place. We have since then listened to those concerns and have worked incredibly close with metro planning and others to get to where we are today. Throughout the process, SNAP has requested deferrals and revisions that are more representative of our neighbors. We thank the metro planning staff for their consistent collaborations with our community, whether that was meeting directly with our neighbors, SNAP board members, or others. Over the last four months, SNAP board members have assisted and participated in hosting community listening sessions, phone calls, emails, in-person meetings, and have done absolutely everything we could to engage as many members of the community as possible. We especially want to thank Harriet Brooks from the metro planning staff, as I'm sure she'll be glad to not see her phone numbers or emails pop up in her inbox anytime soon. One fundamental concern remains unresolved within the Wedgwood Houston character areas of the U D O, as Colby hinted at earlier. On behalf of the SNAP organization, I'm here tonight to ask for you to approve the U D O with one condition. That condition is to identify neighborhood centers to enable live-work spaces that maintain our creative culture and enhance walkability with street activation. We are truly grateful that all stakeholders acknowledge and agree that this needs to be incorporated to best reflect the future vision of Wedgwood Houston. We've already begun collaborating with Councilman Sledge, metro planning, landowners, and others to see this through. Planning, landowners, and others to see this through. As of most recent, Councilmember Sledge has committed to continuing this conversation and supporting our efforts. As I say this, you may also find the same thing, that several members of the greater Nashville community may speak in opposition to the UDO. While there may be a technical difference in opinion, this should not take away from the credibility and urgent need for the UDO's approval tonight. With this in mind, as advocates of Wedgewood Houston for over 40 years, we're more optimistic than ever that this UDO is in the best interest of our community development and our collective quality of life. By overwhelming majority, SNAP supports this UDO moving forward with an affirmative vote from the Planning Commission and with the collective understanding that we continue the work with Councilmember Sledge. Thank you all again for your time and for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean?
Hi. So sorry, I'm trying to put myself on mute.
Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Voe and I live at 18 Clayborne Street, Nashville, Tennessee 37210. I've been a resident of Chestnut Hill for almost four years, and I also serve as the president of Chestnut Hill Neighborhood Association, also known as TAG. And I just want to, one, thank you so much to the Planning Commission and to the planning staff. We, I feel like I've been living the UDO recently, and I know that we have been doing an engagement for many years now. And I just want to share my appreciation for all the hard work and especially the specific meetings that we had with Chestnut Hill neighbors, with Harriet. Even in the middle of a flood, we made sure and had those meetings. So I am just calling in to support 20A and 20B. I do definitely want to recognize once again that our neighbors did have concerns about the NS zoning, and we are so thankful we were able to have a meeting with Councilmember Sledge, and we will be working towards that and resolve that in the long term. But in the short term, we understand why it's in the current iteration. And so thank you all so much, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next caller, Sean?
Chair, you have the next caller.
Thank you. You may begin.
Mr. Dwayne Cuthbertson, 409 Merritt Avenue. And I just want to echo the sentiments from the councilmember regarding the effort. This has been pretty extraordinary. I specifically want to thank Harriet for her patience, as some of us stressed, impressed, and pressed her on the details. As of the last deferral, many, there were a fair number in Wedgewood Houston who still had a few concerns about the details, but as late as this morning, many of those concerns were addressed by staff. And so you're probably seeing a fair number of emails from a number of us in Wedgewood Houston addressing concerns, and I think most of those have been addressed. Talked to a lot of folks who have been on those email chains and they're pretty happy or satisfied with the current draft. I want to emphasize Katie's condition for neighborhood centers. We'd love to see some of those in our neighborhood in the future. So there may be a few items that some folks still want to try and discuss, but overall, I think many who still had some of those concerns now support the intent and the draft of the UDO in front of you. So we're excited about the future that UDO looks to create, and I just ask you to support it.
Thank you. Please state your name and address again.
Chair, this is Sean with the call center. The caller had already disconnected when you asked for the name and address, but I believe the name was Dwayne Cuthbertson. I didn't catch the address, but we'll have it in the report.
He's a, he's a, he's a regular. We know.
Yep, we can, we'll have him for the record. So with that, there are currently no additional callers in the queue for this item.
Oh, okay. Excellent. How about one, I mean, we've had a lot of time, so I think we can move on, move on, I think. I want to make sure we don't miss any callers. How about we give one more minute and then we'll, we'll go from there. This is a big item.
That's fine, Chair. We'll, we'll take a pause and I'll check back in in, in just a bit.
Thank you. I just want to make sure as we, this is a big item, so. Items. Any other callers, Sean?
Chair, we have no additional callers for this, these items.
Okay, thank you very much. And so seeing no other callers, councilman, you want to wrap it up?
Yes, Chair, thank you. And I will reaffirm what the callers mentioned from SNAP and TAG, the agreements as articulated are accurate, and I have agreed to those with the neighborhoods, and I would request the Commissioner's support on both items. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And personally, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work on this. I know it's, it's, it's always challenging to get that much public input, but I really do appreciate you and the staff and all of the neighbors. It's quite a feat, so I appreciate everybody. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, declare the public hearing closed, and now we're on to discussion. And I just, I feel like it's important to recognize, Commissioner Sims first on this particular item. Commissioner Sims?
I knew you were going to do this to me. Actually, as somebody who really loves working and living in an urban core, I'm blown away that we could get to this much, and I cannot imagine how much time this took on everybody's part. And a little bit self-serving, I do want to thank the staff of the Planning Commission. Just how much work it took to get even a document like this is kind of staggering to me. I think everything was addressed that really, I was actually kind of startled at all the letters that came in, all basically saying the same thing with feedback about the structural concerns. All appeared to have been addressed or can be addressed pretty easily later down the road. The only concern that I heard that people really wrote a lot about, we heard some tonight, is about the no short-term rentals. And I think we make decisions as commissioners based on our own education, experience, and values. And, and I wish I could give the neighborhood, in this case, my voice for neighbor, for short-term rentals. But based on my education and research capabilities, all the research points to all the problems that short-term rentals bring with it. In my own experience, living in an urban core neighborhood and being inundated with short-term rentals, and being someone really interested in public policy, it is almost impossible to regulate the short-term rental industry. So I just have to support the councilmember here and with all the NSs. Other than that, I really congratulate everybody. And I think the two concerns of the neighborhoods themselves have been addressed again, except for the short-term rentals, and I can't go along with that. That's all I've got to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims. And I know this is near and dear to your heart, so I appreciate all of your hard work. Councilwoman Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I've got to say that Councilmember Sledge manages, ever since we got elected, he manages to have these large zoning projects or overlay projects. And somehow, in what appears to be like with little, like, short periods of time, I mean, this is a long period of time, but for those of us on the outside looking in, it seems that he and the planning staff are able to get people on the same page. And it seems like they do it with, you know, the greatest of ease. And it just blows me away because we have so many other areas in my district that, that it does not go that, that easy. And so I'm just always so impressed with these that go through. And this is, this is really exciting to see this type of UDO be put in and be a model for other areas of towns and other neighborhoods and other council districts. And so I'm just really excited to support the staff on this and support Councilmember Sledge on it, because I think this is going to make a standard that we need in other areas. And this area is so precious because it is, it is in danger of, of losing its Nashville identity. And so I'm really proud to support it tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Commissioner Lawson?
Wow. They have said everything that is, that you can really say. It's a perfect example of us working with the community and our government leaders to come and with a definite agreement on something, which is quite unique in our environment. And I support what the staff has done. I can't do anything but that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chairman. This document and zone change is so impressive and very thoughtful. I would like to echo thanking our hard-working staff and the community member, the level of engagement, thoughtfulness, you know, I can only tell how many hours, you know, they have put so many meetings and thoughtfulness, and it's really a community-leading document. And also, Councilmember Sledge, and he's a champion of affordable housing and protecting community and neighborhood character. And this is really the proof of his belief. And I am so impressed with this, you know, end result. I mean, February 25th, that document was already impressive enough, but since then, the more engagement literally improved the document. And this massive zone change, it's nearly impossible, but it's a really great statement. And I think, like Councilwoman Murphy said, other community can take example of this. And, you know, community-led engagement with a deep engagement with a district council member and hard-working planning staff can actually produce this great result. And I am so proud and I am so excited to support this this evening. And thanks to everybody involved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tibbs?
Yes, I, to definitely support this. And these are the kind of things I think are good, you know, happens in communities that can, you know, especially as they're growing and developing, kind of keeps some boundaries on it. Speaking of boundaries, so the, the ones that are removed, the properties that are removed, do you have a map of that again that shows those? And is it, were those just because they were, could you show those again?
Hi, this is Lisa. I'm not sure that the scale may, I'm not sure that we have them zoomed in. But if you want to try to explain where they are on this map, that could be helpful.
Sure. Are we discussing the properties that were taken out?
Yes. And, and the question was, were they, and were they taken out because of, they were kind of an outlier on the boundaries and faced other, you know, just, and, and it's not to kill it or change it, but I always get curious about that and when we do these sometimes, and just curious how, if continuity is disrupted.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. And I apologize, I have a toddler in the bathtub. You might hear him in the background. So all, all of the properties that were removed were in Chestnut Hill, and they were all on the edge of the boundary. The ones on Wharf Avenue had recently worked with Councilmembers Sledge to be rezoned fairly recently and are almost adjacent to Lafayette. And so they wanted to, to keep the designation and not be rezoned residential. And then the ones, the ones, the other ones are on the very northern end of First Avenue South and the very southern end of First Avenue South. And those were also properties that are not, that are not currently being used as residential properties, and they requested to be taken out of it as well because they were on the edge and because they didn't really fit within the residential designation of, that the other, other properties were being rezoned to.
Okay. I, I have, you know, assumed that rationale. I just wanted to just kind of hear it one more time. But yeah, I'm totally in support of this, and I think it's great for the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Farr, you're the last speaker.
Last? Well, I, I want to add my thanks and appreciation to Councilmember Sledge for all of the hard work. It's been amazing to watch this from a distance, just, just even through our staff reports for the last several months. So thank you for all of the work in trying to find common ground with the community and developers. And this is a really important area in downtown, and I'm glad that we're being proactive to try to preserve the character as best that we can. So I guess if it's, if I'm last, I will make, well, I will start by making a recommendation that we approve, staff's recommendation, I'm making a motion that we approve staff's recommendation for item 20A.
That's a proper motion. And is there a second? Commissioner Sims, do you want to second it?
I second it.
Thank you. It's a proper motion. And second, any discussion, if you would raise your icon hands and/or verbally state you would like to speak. Seeing none, we are ready for roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson? Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye. 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 Aye.
And, and the chair votes aye? And if I'm, if the chair is silent, I'm always an aye with the groups unless I, just so you know, but I, the chair votes aye as well. Vice Chair, you want to make a, well, how about we try this? Commissioner Sims, do you want to make a motion on 20B?
Sir, I move that we accept the staff's approval for item 20B.
So 20A was approved. Item 20B, that's a proper motion. Vice Chair, do you want to second?
I will second that motion. Thank you.
It's a proper motion. And second, any discussion, if you would raise your icon hand and/or verbally state you would like to discuss. Seeing none, we're ready for roll call vote. Vice Chair Farr?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lawson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Murphy?
Aye.
Commissioner Sims?
Aye.
Commissioner Tibbs?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and item 20B is approved. I just want to say, great work to the team and to all the, the public and the councilmen. Appreciate you, Councilmember Sledge. Great work. Now we are on the last part of our agenda. Anything on other business? Anything from historic?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I made an announcement at the last meeting, but I want to make one more time. Metro Historic Zoning Commission will be meeting on April 21st. On that meeting, we are scheduled to vote on Historic Zoning Design Guideline Consolidation Project. At the March 17th meeting, we had conducted a public hearing and we heard from the public. But since it's a big project, we kept the public hearing open. So if particularly other community member who are residing in the 22 Historic Zoning Overlay Community, I will encourage them to reach out and to Historic Zoning Commission, our website, and check out under Design Guideline Consolidation Project. And if you have any additional comment, please reach out to Historic Commission. And if you have any additional comment, please reach out to historiccommission@nashville.gov to give your input. And thank you.
Thank you. And Parks, Commissioner Haynes is no longer on the call. Executive Committee report, Vice Chair. The only thing I have to report is, and the Director Kemp can help me out here, but it looks, it's looking like we probably are going to go back in person in May. Director Kemp, do you have an update on that? Or Lisa? Or Bob?
This is Bob. That's what I have heard, but I have not heard anything in the last couple of weeks. But I, there's been no new communications with us regarding changes, so I'm assuming that in May, we might be back in person.
I'm sorry, this is Lucy. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
By the time I figure out my mute button, we'll be meeting back in person. Bob answered it. The only thing I would add is that we are taking steps to ensure that the commission's comfort in, in chambers and to ensure that we have a thoughtful plan for hearing public comment in person. And I would just reiterate, we do anticipate that in early May. And if something changes, as we've all had to grow accustomed to changes in this, in this year, we'll, we'll certainly let you know.
And, and just to add to that, the Director and I will meet and to make sure that we feel like we have a, and I'll communicate, we'll communicate with the Vice Chair and to the Commissioners and keep y'all posted, but to make sure we go along with CDC guidelines. And so, I just want to make sure we, I communicate that, you know, everyone's safety is the most important thing. If you have concerns or comments, please direct those to, to the Director and before then, so that we can try to address them or if you have a special need, then that would be great. So thank you, everybody. Director, do you have anything you want to add?
I just wanted to give folks a very quick update on the Second Avenue recovery and rebuilding effort underway. I mentioned at my last briefing that the local Urban Land Institute office came to, well, came virtually to Nashville last week and held a series of sort of stakeholder interviews, envisioning sessions to provide some additional technical and professional advice to us at Metro for how to ensure that this area thrives in the future. And so, we are nearing the end of a three-month-long sort of listening phase, I would say. And the next step will be to put together a plan of action. And I look forward to presenting that to the community and to you as well. So Chairman, I will work with you to figure out the right time for, for me to give the commission a full briefing on our work and we can include some of our metro partners from Historic and elsewhere to, to, to provide that. So I think, I think that given where we have come over the last three months, four months, I'm just incredibly proud of the team of folks who are working on this and the community and the neighborhood who have been so invested in, in a difficult, in a difficult process. And so, anyway, that, that's my update. So thank you.
Thank you, Director. We appreciate all. I know you've been working hard on it and, and from the entire commission, we appreciate you. Anything, Councilwoman, anything on legislative update?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Well, our next meeting is April 22nd. Be there, be square. And is there a motion to adjourn? That concludes our business. Proper motion without objection. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.